It's March 14th, not the Ides of March, we're not going to worry about that. And not for a while, not for a few hours. And our calendar is before you. Lots of, lots of subcommittee meetings and the school committee has a workshop. So we will be right here at 6:00 in five days on Tuesday. And we're going to be talking about the district and departmental goals, a mid-year update. And also we'll be getting a report from Kalis Burnham, the senior director for educational equity on Tuesday. And then there again, as I said at our last meeting, there are a number of sort of celebrations and gala fundraisers ongoing. There's the BEF trivia, which is up next, Steps to Success Gala. And quite a few of people around this table I saw at the Teen Center Gala on Saturday night, which was a great, great, great event. But of course, you'll have to wait till next year for that one. It's not on our calendar anymore. Anything else on the calendar? Okay. Yes?
It's there, never mind.
Okay. So we have quite a few items on the consent agenda, and I just want to kind of give you a two-sentence summary. And then if anybody would like to spend more time on them, I think what we might do is take them off the consent agenda and then take them up in more detail when we get to Capitol Subcommittee Report. But I don't believe that's necessary, so they're in two categories. There's the minutes, the past record. But then items two and three are chain orders for the Coolidge Corner School, and this is just kind of closeout stuff. The first one, which is for only $4,000, actually was like 30 items, some up, some down. You know, you can look at it, it's here, I think it's here at the table. The $88,000 for reconciling utility costs, energy costs, and it actually, there was a big offset of like $50,000 that the town got a credit for energy, and so it's not as big as it seems. The next four all have to do with the high school project and basically, and I'm speaking from the knowledge that Ms. Charlebsky and I both attended the building commission meeting on Tuesday night. So we were able to listen to the dialogue between building department staff, the project managers, and, and the architect, and the building commission. So basically, what the building commission said about the next four is that these are good news. It means that the budgets, the monies that were appropriated in the 2018 debt exclusion vote by the, for, to build the high school project, that we're actually starting to spend them. And that's basically, and they approved all of these. And it's all within, yeah, it's all within, it's all within the budget and the expectations, including moving ahead with something called a force account with the MBDA, but that's just so that we can start doing the work of the state, of the MBTA, et cetera. So is that, do we, any objections to, or questions about any of that for the consent agenda? So I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Similar.
Thank you, a second. Thank you, Mr. Berman. On the motion, all in favor, please? Thank you very much, that's unanimous. All right. Ms. Coyne, I think we're ready for public comment. So first, we have Tanya Montes Paris, is that right? Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. We teach our children that when they break something, they must fix it. That rule applies to us, the adults, in their lives. At a recent PTO meeting, a school committee member shared that school committee members in the past have been discouraged from visiting classrooms by a former superintendent. I sat there in shock. But then, there was a moment of relief. To me, it helped explain a big part of the current disconnect, a link to the bridge of trust that had been broken. That school committee member explained her desire to work with teachers, to visit our schools, our classrooms. And as I listened to her sincere wish, my heart lit up. There is hope, my brain whispered. We can change this narrative. Hope for true collaboration, for courageous and for open-door dialogue, and for mutual respect. We want you to visit our classrooms, and not just because we want you to celebrate with us the accomplishments and to understand the challenges we face, but also because we want you to see us. Change can be difficult, yet rewarding. Our classroom population continues to grow, and so does the challenges that our students bring. We are your children's teachers. We are their parents. Our students bite us, scratch us, kick us, yet we come back next morning with new hopes and a refreshed love for each and every one of them. Change can be difficult, yet they bring opportunities. Open negotiation gives us an opportunity to fix that broken link. We are asking you, please, give us, give this format a try, give it a chance. We're asking you to please lift your heads and see us. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Wergland.
Hi, I'm Karen Wergland. And before I get started, I just wanted to say that Christine, right over here, needs to leave soon, so I'm wondering if she can go right after me. I'm here to follow up on my request for a food supplier who can commit to food waste prevention, ideally with third-party oversight, who offers a plant-rich diet, who can accommodate composting, as well as a food recovery program to donate untouched food to the hungry. Lancet says that food is behind one-third of our global emissions. Drawdown ranks food waste reduction as the number-three solution to climate change, with a plant-rich diet ranking at number four. And the Washington Post says that if food waste were a country, it would come in third after the U.S. and China in terms of impact on global warming. I understand the RFB has already gone out, but these concerns are great enough to warrant a revision. We have just 10 years to avoid the worst of climate change, and tons of food move through the district every day. We have the opportunity to make a real difference, so I think we should address this right now. Our kids are counting on us. I also have comments from a woman named Marga Dieter, who could not be here because she has the flu. Hers pertain to composting. She's a mother out front, just like me, who is volunteering in the high school with their composting program, who, she says, the schools that are composting right now are Pierce, which has a pilot for the sixth grade, Lincoln, which started this week to compost for all the students. They had a successful pilot starting in November 2019 for grades six, seven, and eight. And VHS has been successfully composting for two years. The problem is the volunteers often, often have to separate the non-compostable materials from the compostable materials, because the students are not yet aware enough of how composting works. So she's hoping that the new food service should provide only compostable materials to eat with. Specifically, what they want are totally compostable materials, including knives and forks, cups and bowls, plates and condiment containers. In other words, totally compostable materials to eat with, which is a great goal. And now my son, Oscar, is the next one on those, and then I'm hoping Christine can go.
I'm Oscar Schacter, nine-year-old son of Karen Wergland. And like my mom, I'm very concerned with the direction this plan is heading in. This is why I propose that schools have more and better composting and food recovery programs. That will be our first step in stopping food waste emissions and saving Earth.
Thank you. Christine Ingas.
I'm just here to basically reiterate what Karen has said. My daughter, Deena, is a Driscoll student, and she is right behind me, hasn't quite got the confidence to speak, but she has agreed with what I've said. We're here to also encourage you to consider the environment impact of the food service provider that you're going to be considering. My brother is actually a researcher in sustainable food production, and I asked him what his main takeaways of his work were. And he said, number one, without a dramatic reduction in meat consumption, the parent's goals are just not achievable. So as a starting point, we have to do something, otherwise the goals won't ever be reached. Diets with a high plant content are much healthier, and surely we should be encouraging our children to be eating healthier things. And then his final thing was reducing food waste is just a no-brainer. I mean, it says, it says it all, it's waste, right? Avoiding food waste saves money, reduces the environmental impact on our diets. Eliminating household food waste would save carbon emissions equivalent to taking one in four cars off the road. Now, eliminating it, that's pretty impossible, but I feel like we've got a pretty good start here of at least getting towards that, that goal. Thank you very much for listening.
Marga Dieter. Oh, I'm sorry. We had that. Oscar Schacter, we had Oscar. Jessica Wenderschubel.
I'm stepping up tonight alongside the BEU members you see here, Tanya Paris, others, in order to particularly thank June Gafssen, who you are going to meet, for helping us all understand how open-up bargaining sessions to more than the core group of negotiators who speak really is an extension of what serves children best in our schools. Thank you, June, for taking the time from being president of the Hingham Teachers Association and a social studies teacher to make your way out to Brookline. I really believe that open bargaining in all of its forms draws on what we already value in Brookline. I really believe it's an extension of a commitment that I actually saw in this room during the last school committee meeting, where I sat here and I watched a candid and transparent dialogue between a Brookline parent, a former principal, a current teacher, a retired teacher, and a recent student. And I'm sorry, David, but because you're the youngest, like at Passover, you have to be the child that answers, asks the questions. I heard fascinating substantive productive discussion about standardized data collection and how and whether teacher time should be devoted to talking about it. I thought it particularly thought-provoking, actually, Susan, when you suggested that you wanted to take a half-step back, and rather than say, here's all the data, you know, how can it be useful to us to instead ask, what does success look like? When we think of a literate child, I'm quoting Susan, "an equitable classroom, how do we know when we see it?" Really appreciated it. If you look at the platform of negotiations that reflects the dialogue among our members and people in the community, you'll see an emphasis on honoring difference in culture, belief, in teaching and learning styles. I saw those values demonstrated in this room at your last meeting. Your meeting embodied a range of voices and experience. Your dialogue drew on knowledge of the perspectives of others who aren't members of the committee. It was evidence of a respect for diversity in viewpoints and a grappling with opposing positions. You know, the union knows how to do this. We're skilled at maintaining unity and a shared purpose even when our members disagree. We're candid with one another about our different visions and styles, but we work effectively together. We get a lot done, even as we respect differing priorities. You all may not know just how skilled we are. As Tanya said, we want you to give this a chance, and we will find out whether this new trend, this new movement, is good for Brookline. We're bringing experience and skill about it, running a well-coordinated organization of 1,175 members to this process. And I want to reassure you that our members who come as silent representatives know what the role of our core speaking representatives is, and there will be continuity in the substance of what is negotiated. Our members understand what form of leadership our committees exercise, and it would be worthwhile for the larger community, and all of you too, to understand this, not to be left, unfortunately, to rely on negative stereotypes of unions. I think you on this committee will be pleased with what you see, and I think your constituents will as well. So let me just close with this. There is a place for management lawyers in collective bargaining, but our success at improving our schools comes when educators with different roles, parents, ideally students, you heard them here, ask together, what does our success look like and how will we know when we see it? You will hear us talk about toxic stress and overwork for students and educators alike, and how we believe we can bring joy back into these classrooms. Our members bring a perspective that wasn't in the room as you, as a school committee talked about the issue of data last time. Now it's time to collectively bargain with a union that has a lot to offer our schools. Let's sit down, have a candid and transparent discussion of what agreements will make our schools better, and help the students excel, because they are all loving learning in our buildings. So we intend to bring silent representatives into the sessions for the sake of transparency and the very kind of dialogue that I think you understand. And I think we're closer here than it may seem to some, and I'm very excited about it. And I'm going to thank June again, ask her to come up and share her experience with you.
So I'm a little bit out of my ZIP code range, although I did grow up in Newton, your great Thanksgiving rivals of ours. My dad built the Pierce School. So it's kind of like I'm coming home again. I'm here to speak about making the bargaining process less opaque and more open. For the first time in our last session, we brought our teachers right from the beginning, first to prioritize our proposals, and then also as silent representatives during a variety of meetings that we had with the administration. And then we opened up and had meetings with our entire membership prior to ratification. Both our superintendent and school committee were welcome to have the more open process. It was more transparent. It led to a greater understanding of the process and the outcome. It also led to a quicker ratification, as unit members had a clear understanding of what happened throughout the process. Involved teachers built trust in the process, fostered a spirit of community, and began to repair a tense relationship between our members and previous school committee members. I'm sorry, and school committee members. In addition to being open, the process put faces to names and gave everyone a sense that we are in this together to ensure the best for our students and our families. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Hi, Bob Miller, Heath School teacher and resident of Brookline on Copley Street. So I just want to talk really briefly about opening negotiations, not just to representatives of the union, but to the public. And basically, what I wanted to say about that is that for so many years, and it seems to me it's somewhat connected to the Ninth School Process, which hopefully we're in the final chapters of. But I've been hearing over and over and over again about lack of transparency in the process and the whatever, and this and that, and, you know, much of the time directed at the school committee. And I think that it's really in everybody's interest to open up negotiations, not just to representatives of the union, but to the public of Brookline. You know, I remember, I think it was at the Democratic Representative Elections for, for representatives to go to the State Department, that I was approached a number of times by multiple people saying, what's going on? We don't know what to believe. And a lot of people felt like they just didn't know what was going on. And I think that even if those people don't come and witness negotiations, the opportunity to do so makes people feel like that it's not such a mysterious and concealed thing. So I would, I would encourage you to do that. I think that, you know, as, you know, somebody quoted Judge Brandeis recently, that, and I'm not giving a quote, but talking about sunlight being the best disinfectant. And I think that that's really true. I think we're in an age now in this country where, you know, people want more openness. They want to be able to come and see, and they want to be able to hear. They want open hearings. They don't want a lot of closed doors. And, you know, I think that it would really serve the school committee to invite people to come on in and to be witness to the process, not to be part of the process, but to be a witness to the process. The other thing that I want to mention briefly, because it was on the agenda tonight about the food services, and this is not exactly related, but, you know, the Heath School, when we did the expansion, put in all sorts of new equipment to be able to wash trays and silverware at lunchtime. And we don't do it anymore, and I think it's because we don't have enough people there to actually do the, the job of loading and unloading the dishwashers. And, you know, we talk about climate all the time in Brookline. We, I think, are pretty woke on the issue of how important climate change is, and to be throwing away thousands and thousands of trays when the school has brand-new equipment to wash them is really, I think, a huge, huge mistake. You know, there's plastic trash bags that get filled up with these, then the custodians have to haul them away. I haven't done a study to figure out what the cost differential is between the cost of the trays and the plastic bags and the custodial time, but whatever it is, it can't be enough for us to be putting that many trays into the waste stream. So I would hope that that's something that we can all take a look at, and I would certainly be willing to look into that and put a little work into that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my list. Is there anyone else here who would like to make public comment? Say, introduce yourself again at the microphone.
I came in late from appointment. And I just wanted to follow on Bob's last message. And just say, it's timely, the United Nations released its Global Environmental Report yesterday, and there's absolutely nothing in it that everyone in this room doesn't know, that humans, everyone in this room, are disrupting and degrading the environment. And our students, our children, your children also know this, and it's something, a fact of life that they've been born into. They get that message every single day, and it's getting increasingly dire in their The United Nations report, according to the Washington Post article, quote, "calls for environmental considerations to be mainstreamed into all social and economic decisions. The environment viewed as central to all policymaking." And that's going to require business changes, change in business as usual. And businesses are beholden to their stockholders. Our business is education, our stockholders are children, and it seems Our stockholders are our children, and it seems counter to profitability. Not that I'm a finance person, but they say that you invest in your future, right? You invest in your stockholders, you make them happy, and nothing that we're doing in our food system is doing that. And in a district where kids are told that they're valued, I think it's really hard for some kids when every single thing that they have in their school lunch, because they can't afford to bring environmentally conscious packaging, they go up, despite a lifetime of reduce, reuse, recycle, their option is trash, and that's it. And it's hard for them to deal with that, and they know that they're doing the wrong thing. So I'm hoping we can help them do the right thing and help invest in their future. Sorry, I ran up the five stairs. I'm still, I'm trying to get here in time. They're willing to make a change. And I think the kids are willing to change what they do here, or if they make small sacrifices, they're willing, and all of our children are also willing to do that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, hang on a second, anyone else would like to make public comment? Hang on, Francesca, we got somebody behind you.
Hi, I'm Josh Paris. I'm chair of the math department at the high school. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the environmental work that's being done at the high school. I have calf duty once a week, and, yeah, the kids, many kids try to do the composting, and they don't quite know exactly how to do it, and it's our job to help them. And I think that's, it's not perfect, but it's going really well. And we need to take the next step. There's still, you know, if you go in the cafeteria where the bagels are, they have these nice cardboard, sorry, containers that the kids use. You go to the salad bar next door, and it's all plastic. Plastic containers, plastic utensils, and it just doesn't seem to me that we're that far off to say, let's have no more plastic in the cafeteria, which will go a long way. And just, I don't have a solution to this problem, but you should go by the cafeterias of the schools and see how much food is wasted every day. It's just, I sit there and I watch, I watch kids take apples, and I know, like, I know there's regulations about that food being offered kids, and they take them and they go right into the compost. And I'm like, it's just so sad to see. So I think we need to do more, and this is an issue that we need to attack. And in Brookline, we do, and we need to take, I think, further steps. Thank you.
So the Keep Club met today.
Oh, please, we know who you are, but please reintroduce yourself to the television audience.
Oh, drat, I always forget about that. My name's Francesca Stark. I teach fifth grade at the Driscoll School, and I am the coordinator of the, currently Driscoll School Keep Club, although it seems like it might be expanding to other schools. One of the students is writing a manifesto to create other chapters in other schools. And today they met and were writing an article into the tab, and then I said, could you write an article for the school committee? And they said, not now. So anyway, it's coming. But one thing is, every single day, they come up and say, Ms. Stark, not only do they have plastic utensils, they have plastic utensils inside plastic bags, inside plastic, like plastic inside, it's like the Russian egg dolls, just everything is inside. And I think also, one of the students wrote a letter that she's trying to get out to the parents, and then she was told she was wasting paper to send it. So we're always struggling, like, where the waste is, but to try to get as a school system for parents to also send in utensils, like pack in, pack out. And, but it's so hard if the town doesn't endorse it. So for example, if we have a night at Driscoll to celebrate things, there's thousands of little water bottles, like, it's just, the town, people don't even know, so the kids don't know, the parents don't know. If you have a sports event, thousands of water bottles and plastic utensils. So we really have to make it a unified approach everywhere we go, that the school committees, I mean, I'm not looking around at your plastic bottles or anything, but that, you know, everybody's putting away, but that we really, we really do this holistically, and if the food service is the number one thing, that, as we were saying, and there's a really good article I was sharing, it's in a podcast called Goats and Soda, and it just, I can send it to you, but it talks just about everything around the amount of methane, that it, one student said, Ms. Stark, I don't know if we can do this anymore, it's just, it's just so hard to think about the future. And this article is called Life in 2050, If We Manage Things Now, Like There Is Hope. And they talk, one of the biggest things is the food and the methane and the meat consumption. So, and also time to eat. Kids just chuck their food away. And so I do think we have to all decide to do this, the food, and if they, and if we don't all decide to do it, you can't just do it partially. You can't just have the Keep Club doing it. You can't just have, it has to be everybody in all the schools. And the reason Driscoll doesn't have a compost thing is, I don't know, is Liz still here? Yeah. I mean, sorry, Suzanne, Sue, Zobel. Because what happens if you don't have everybody do it, you have one or two teachers doing it. And you can't, you can't run a compost system if only three people are doing it. It has to be, and if that teacher's out, it doesn't happen. So we really have to make it, everybody does it, or it really won't work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
I have one tiny comment. It's just because everyone was talking about compostable silverware versus dishwashers. And I was just talking today to the people who were working on composting at BHS, and they say that they're asking for compostable materials because it makes it easier to compost. But eventually, their wish and their goal is for all the schools to use dishwashers. And that's a harder sell, because some of them, I think some of the schools have gotten rid of their dishwashers, and others just simply aren't using them or are not staffed to use them. But eventually, the goal is to use dishwashers, because there is at least one study that says that those are not only better for the earth, but they are cheaper to use.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing to Ms. Zobel. I'm so impressed with what you have done with your students, you and Ms. Munoz. It has been amazing. I had seen it. I know that Ms. Monopoly has seen, and I think having the children, teach the younger children, is just, that's what K3 is all about. You know, that's the integration of how we help kids to learn, and that's how, it can't be teachers are monitoring that. There needs to be some, but it has to be inside the kids. And I think if we get them young, it'll happen in the high school, too. So thank you for all your hard work.
Can I add on to that? So I was there at Lincoln School on the first day of full-on composting for all the grades, and it went fantastically well, in my opinion. I watched the younger grades, and they had been taught by the older grades, and they had gone into the classrooms and done some lessons, and the seventh graders had come down at the beginning of the session, I believe, and then left. And so when I was there, there was just the young kids, and they were scraping all of the food waste into the compost and putting recyclables, you know, like the apple suss container, and she had scraped it out and put it in the recycle, and only trash was going in the trash, and they were stacking the trays. And it was just amazing. And so I just wanted to sort of give a shout out to the awesome process and the really thoughtful work that had gone to support all of the students to do that. It was really, it was like lovely to watch them doing that and doing it well. So I just really appreciate the support of the teachers. And the amazing thing was how student-driven that whole process was, and that it's a lot of the kids pushing the adults to do the right thing. I think that we know that we need to do. So it was, it was just really, it's an amazing process, and I'd love to see us be able to replicate that. It was cool.
All right. On to our fiscal year 2020 budget update.
So as I go into the budget update, I just want to remind the committee and folks who are still here that both Ms. Charlofsky is a representative of the school committee and Matt Gillis, on behalf of the school department, are working with DPW, because DPW manages all of the refuse, and we're charged for that through the Town-School Partnership. And so it's important, from my perspective, that the monies from the Town-School Partnership that support educators, continue to support educators, and the monies through the Town-School Partnership that are supported or funded through DPW are redirected, and I agree fully with the desire to redirect those funds from landfill stream to composting. So to that end, Mr. Gillis had a number of schools that were bid or were looked at recently, and two schools in the past few days to continue getting cost estimates for DPW. So work is happening, and just to sort of to remind, we discussed this a couple weeks ago, late, and I just wanted to remind everyone.
And we also actually discussed a capital subcommittee. We continued, and Mr. Gillis showed us the numbers, and we need to make sure it comes from the town budget.
Because, let me go into our FY 20 budget update. So some good news for the school committee. At the last school committee meeting, you voted a deficit budget, $386,690 in deficit, and you voted a revenue amount that was higher than, I'm sorry, that was lower, obviously, than the deficit. So I'm pleased to tell you that through two moves, we're able to take that deficit from $386,000 to a $7,305 surplus. The simple, sort of, the brief explanation is through two adjustments to benefits, both looking at the trends for the past couple of years and the number of new benefits that we add, we, both Ms. Dunn and I, feel that it's acceptable to, again, because of past trends, to reduce our assumptions for new benefits. And the GIC rates were voted, resulted in, resulting in, via the Town-School Partnership, an additional $118,000 in savings that are added back to our operating budget. The total GIC savings for the town was about $200,000, and via the Town-School Partnership mechanism, which is a little more complex for GIC, because we have far more benefit-eligible employees than the town. The town netted about $80,000 of that into town budget, and we netted $118,000 into our budget. The second adjustment that I've been able to make is a staffing adjustment. I'm going to be general in this, because the person in the position hasn't necessarily announced broadly their intentions, but this is a non-student-facing, non-school, direct-service position, where they, we're anticipating a one-year leave of absence, and therefore do not need to fund the position for next year. So this is not a long-term solution to the budget, but it allows us to get to a balanced budget for FY 20. And again, it's not, it's a non-student-facing, a non, this is not, again, when the person has announced their intentions, I can be much clearer, but I don't want to make that publicly on camera before they share their plans. Now, in terms of restoration recommendations, my recommendation to the school committee, in particular, if Chapter 70 funds come in higher, are these three priorities. Priority number one being funding an additional EL teacher. The budget has one new English learner instructor. I would like to fund a second one in the budget, holding that position in reserve, pending enrollment in the fall. And we're continuing to see a rise in our English language learner program, starting this year at approximately 900 students enrolled, and we're on pace for 1,000 potentially by the end of the year. So, and we continue to see growth. On the second, based on a lot of questions from this, the full committee in various subcommittees, at advisory, concerns about the reduction to supplies and materials, and there was a total reduction across different budget line items of $531,000, and so I'm recommending after funding an EL teacher, restoring a portion or all of those funds. And the third is advancing from the year-three override plan into this year, an additional guidance counselor. So this budget includes a new guidance position, and if funds became available, I would like to advance the year-three position, the one that is planned for in FY 21 in FY 20. Any questions? So the good news is, at this point, well before the end of April deadline, we have a balanced budget. So I thank the committee for all of your feedback, and I thank Ms. Dunn and her team, all of her team, for working through the numbers so diligently over the past several months.
Thank you. So I guess just for you or Ms. Ditko, is there, the vote that we took previously, is that cover us, or is it going to come back to the committee for a vote sometime between now and town meeting?
So legally, the only vote we need to take is the one we already took, as far as I know. I think there's just, if there's any question about this, I think it's probably best to just do it now. I mean, usually what the other thing that we do, I mean, we vote categories of things, we don't vote line items anyway. So I don't necessarily see the need for another vote, but if people want to take another vote, we can certainly vote more if you want to.
It would seem to me we should wait. You know, sometimes things change along the way, and I think that when the money comes, we can...
So we've already voted it?
Right. Wait for what? Wait to vote?
Wait a minute, I guess I mustn't...
So what the, so the new, so the revenue amount will be higher with that additional $116,000, and so what we...
In addition to the $7,000?
No, no, no.
No, but the, so you...
You started the top of the work down.
Yeah, so the committee voted a revenue amount that is $118,520 lower than it now is with this adjustment. And so the vote would be to vote the new revenue amount, the, what you voted last time, plus this increase, and then the budget is balanced.
All right. So I think for now, we'll just stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Ms. Dunn, you're here. We have non-aligned pay rates and ranges.
So provided for you is the non-aligned pay rates and pay ranges for FY 20. We are advised by Chapter 71, Section 59, in legal counsel, that we need to have the school committee approve pay ranges and pay rates for our non-aligned employees. You've been provided with those pay ranges, as well as a report of comparables that was done last year, and we will continue to monitor these pay ranges against our comparable communities. So I request the committee approve the pay ranges and hourly rates.
So the pay ranges have gone up what looks like some of them just 2%. But it also says that there's COLA for individuals within the approved pay ranges. So I guess part of my question is, looking at the comparables, it didn't seem to me that the pay ranges had to go up by 2%, which is different from the individuals going up by 2%. Like, I didn't see, if you look at our ranges from '19, and you look at the comps, it didn't seem to me that our ranges had to go up. What seemed to have to happen is that our individuals may have to go up, but it didn't feel like our ranges were out of whack. Those seem like two different things. So I'm missing something.
So they are two different things, and I think that's the question for the committee, and I'll let both Ms. Schreinerold and Mr. Glover speak to their recommendations to the committee. I think from my perspective, the request would be to consider a pay range, and either the current pay range or the adjusted one provides me with a pay range, and that is in alignment with comparables. So I'll let... So I'll let...
We, so, and there, something else that I think is of note, you might be interested in, is that we did not have anyone who was at the top of any of the ranges. And so even if the superintendent made the decision to increase the individual where they stand, they would still be within the range. So it's something we discussed at the negotiations subcommittee, and this is ultimately where we ended up, was with an increase in the range, but then an individual look at movement of the positions.
And just, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no one who's going to be sort of automatically moved up or not at the bottom of the range, right? So, but it's a fair question. I mean, I think that it's open for discussion as to whether, whether to change the ranges or not, or to stick with what we've had, which I don't think has been voted, right? The prior ranges were not voted?
No, because, so...
So I get, debating the appropriateness of one in terms of its comparability, it's, to me, it doesn't seem unreasonable to have the, it's still, there's still latitude within the ranges for the superintendent to place folks in, where they, not place them, but to give them whatever raises are appropriate, given the estimation, but, but it's a question. I mean, you know, we could take an alternate approach and not raise the ranges.
So...
So fundamentally, the question is about a pay range. I think what Mr. Glover and Ms. Schreiner Oldham are recommending, I believe, is to vote a range, but not a COLA at this point.
Right.
So that there would be the range for new employees, but at this point, to not, to not vote or approve a COLA. So that's what I left out in response to your first question, Ms. Ditkoff. So from my perspective, either the proposed FY '19 range or the FY 20, either range, it gives me the latitude, along with the comparables, when offering, when trying to make offers to non-aligned, but this is not a, this vote for the, or the request is not to vote a COLA at this time for anyone. The second is to vote the, with a COLA for the hourly and the, for summer programming, and this is a vote that we took very late. So the rest of this, from page four on, is for the summer, for summer programming and...
Correct. That's an important clarification.
That felt, I think, felt to both Mr. Glover and Ms. Schreiner Oldham, important to apply a 2% COLA to those rates.
So at the risk of being a broken record, because I've struggled with this for years, I would probably vote against it, not because we don't statutorily need it, and not because there's, you know, I don't get it. Like, I fundamentally don't get it. Not like I don't get what you just said, like, I actually don't get what our approach is. So it would be one thing if we came in, and I definitely don't get the new ranges, for sure I don't get the 20 ranges, because the '19 ranges, like, we don't, even the '19 ranges don't feel like they're out of whack with the comparables. So raising them by 2% and then having the COLA conversation, I don't get that as a strategy, but more fundamentally, I think we need to have a conversation about, do these, are these comparables the ones that we think are the right ones? I guess is the answer is probably more or less yes. Where do we want to be relative to other districts in terms of the comparables? Do we want to be roughly at the top? Do we want to be the second? Do we want to be in the middle? Do we want to be at the bottom? Like, where do we want to be? I don't feel like we've had that conversation as a district, or as a school committee, anyway. And I don't feel like I completely understand why some of these are like at the top of these, like, some of these ranges are at the top or past where some of the comps are, and some of them aren't, they're like below, and at any rate, I just don't understand our approach. So it's not that we don't legally need this, I've been convinced by Ms. Dunn for the last four years that we need this and we don't have it. I still don't get it, so I'll just leave it that way.
I'm wondering, are you wanting a more in-depth conversation about each range?
Well, I want, I guess for me personally, what would be helpful is to actually have a discussion about, here is our compensation philosophy. So for example, in, with the last superintendent, there was, you know, at one point, he wanted to vote a pool of funds to be able to be allocated over and above, not just the 2% across the board, but a pool equivalent to 2% to be able to be allocated. That was one philosophy, whether or not I agreed with it. Different philosophy is to have steps. A different philosophy is to try to pick a target within the range of our comparables and try to be there. I mean, like, there are lots of different ways to approach non-aligned comp, and for me, I guess I just don't understand our strategy. And I don't understand, like, is our goal with these ranges to try to be, like, completely encompassing of the comps? Is it to be more or less at the 80% of the comps? Like, I definitely understand that the ranges have to move, or else you fall out of alignment, so I get that, but I guess I still don't get our starting point. So I just don't get it. I think that's where I am.
So just to separate the issues a little bit, just in this, maybe a question is for Ms. Dunn.
I mean, other people might be in a different place. I don't want to make any assumptions about where other people are. I've had a problem with this for, I don't know, at least three superintendents, so...
As long as I can remember.
I'm still not comfortable with this. I just, I don't get it.
No, I understand, and they're fair questions, but just for Ms. Dunn, from my understanding, or actually, I guess it's for you, Ms. Ditkoff, the separation of the rates for, the summer rates and those, or do you have as much of an issue with those? Those aren't based on ranges, so I just want to make sure that if there are separate concerns with those before we carry on.
So I don't recall, I mean, I recall having a conversation about a summer rage that seemed pretty compelling, and then we voted it, because it felt like there was an, there were comps, and there was a philosophy, and there was an approach, and then we voted it, and it felt more linear. I think a lot of these other, the non-summer programs, I don't, I think I just, there are other ones that I just don't understand.
No, right, I'm just reminding myself, are there rates attached to any non-summer programs? Reminding myself, yeah.
There are stipends. There are hourly rates for during the school year, for a variety of different roles and responsibilities. If I can add, so one of the, one of the pieces that this points out is we do not have, the district does not have a non-aligned classification plan, and so I'm just looking for ranges, but what really needs to actually occur is a classification plan for non-aligned employees. So that would include your sick time, your vacation time, which positions get what, and that needs to, that has not been developed and needs to get on one of the district goal sheets to be, to be done, so that a number of the questions and concerns that have been raised can be addressed holistically, so we know, what is our non-aligned classification plan? What are the benefits and compensation outside of just salary as well, and how are positions devised, and how does a position get created? So school committee's responsibility is to establish all pay rates, both collective bargaining and non-aligned. So how does that process work?
So amen, all of that, and to my mind, that's the step, that's the precursor step that we still haven't done, after which you do this. Like, under what, what even, not only what are the job classifications, but for the people we have, how are they categorized? So that, to my mind, precedes, is parallel with the compensation philosophy.
In a normal world, yeah. I would agree with you, however, we have, we're, we, I need, we need pay ranges to be able to, I'm trying to fix what immediately needs to happen, and then we can move to...
So just, just so everybody, just myself and everybody else is reminded of, explain the reason why we need the pay ranges once more, one more time. I don't think we've had that discussion.
So part of the, so the duties and responsibilities around the superintendent as managing the school committee's budget, so the budget is the school committee's budget, and so you set personnel costs, pay rates as part of that, part of your duties and requirements and hiring of staff, and the superintendent needs a range and direction in terms of what different positions are, and there's some, just like you do with your collective bargaining agreements, it's the same philosophy for your non-aligned, or should be your same philosophy for your non-aligned, in that what positions are in that, what are the pay ranges, what are the titles, what are the compensation, total compensation for those positions that aren't under a collective bargaining agreement? So your superintendent has parameters for executing that budget and managing the school committee's budget.
What are the, what are the consequences for non-aligned ranges?
You would potentially put your superintendent in a position where he, there are no limits in terms of what he can provide for people that are hired, and there's a budgetary exposure. So part of what you're seeing is this non-aligned list is expanding and growing every time we have it. You are seeing stipends that have not necessarily come to the committee that you know exist. You see a variety of different rates and people we're paying that may or may not have been transparent in the budget as positions, and so to some extent, there's a management and transparency around the budget that, for non-aligned, that the school committee may or may not be aware of, depending on how it comes forward. So in terms of your responsibility as school committee, it's important that school committee establish how pay rates are established, and what those are, and you're made aware of those, so that you're not in violation or in conflict with any other agreements that you may have.
What do others think? Let's, if I don't mind...
May I? I had similar confusions when I was reading the document about, what was it, why were we changing the pay ra, range, and then what was, like, where was the, what was the difference between the changing and increasing the pay range versus an increase for an existing employee getting a raise? So like, I guess, because I'm so familiar with the step system, I was sort of like trying to figure out, like, how does this work like a step system? Or, so I guess to that point, sort of like, what is the philosophy and how does this work? And I think part of compensation, like, part of a bargaining agreement is like, paid time off, paid leave, like, how does that, how can we go about, I guess it's more of a philosophical question. So I had difficulty navigating the document to know whether or not I agreed with it, and because I didn't understand sort of like the structure, the foundation of the decision in order to make the decision. Does that make sense?
To some degree. I mean, I think that, you know, part of the reason that there's not anything in here about individual pay increases is because, quite frankly, given where we were with the budget, we didn't want to commit to anything for 20, which is why we wanted to leave it up, but still establish the ranges to get that piece taken care of. That was the thinking behind that.
So are the, these ranges are just for new hires?
Right. It would be just establishing what the range is, and then as someone is within a position or comes into a position, depending on years of service, where they're coming, how badly we want them, the superintendent could make the decision within that range to decide the salary. So it would, this document is not, does not give any pay raise to anyone who falls within the categories. It just gives the superintendent the tool to be able to make the decisions based on budget and, you know, other considerations of where people would then move within the range.
And then, I, there were some ranges that moved up more significantly than other categories, so some, some ranges went up more, some went by what looked like maybe a 2%, I, you know, increase. So that's where I started getting confused, like, so some of these look like they increased more incrementally, and then others seemed like they went up more, and I didn't know if it was...
I think, I don't know, it's a percent, they went up by a percentage. So if one went up 1,000 and one went up 4,000, that would be because 2% of whatever the number was larger.
You state that. It was, part of it is that the range varies so largely. That was my concern, was like...
Okay, I'm following you.
Sometimes the range is a $5,000 difference, and sometimes it's 20 or more. And it was like, well, why, yeah.
Yes.
The range was just between certain job categories, just so wide.
So maybe you said this, but I'm not clear, how time-sensitive is this for superintendent bond right now? Or is this something that we could really get our arms around, so everybody understands at our workshop in the summer?
Probably a question about that we could akin to the...
I mean, except for the summer work.
The summer rates...
Summer work we should do. I have no problem with that.
I think, I think, I, I need, as superintendent, the summer rates approved today...
Yes.
So that they can be posted, because last year, we waited far too long, and the postings were, were far too late. So the summer rate, so...
You need the principal rates, and you need any new hire rates. So there, if you're hiring a principal, you need a pay range for the superintendent to hire a new principal, and you need a pay range. So I would, I appreciate that, that things are, you know, backwards, and the part of it is trying to establish for the superintendent, what are the pay ranges, so if he has a vacancy, he can actually hire within that pay range. And also appreciate that the differences in the ranges may be a function of rounding, and as we were looking and round, sort of rounding out the pay ranges and the dollar amounts of the ranges. So I, the, I would say, given that I have been attempting to get pay ranges, this is a legal requirement, and it's very difficult for me in my role, I'll just put it in my perspective, it's very difficult for me in my role to add somebody to payroll when I know the school committee has not approved a pay range, and I have a superintendent, and my, part of my job, the uncomfortable part of my job is supporting my superintendent, as well as holding my superintendent accountable to the rules of the school committee. So I, it puts me in conflict. Nobody in here on these ranges is receiving any type of COLA as part of this. It's really about the pay ranges and that the superintendent, under his authority, can hire replacement principals and people in these positions at an approved pay rate, and not, and public pay rate as part of the school committee's budget.
Is there, is there a way to, I mean, it sounds like where we're moving is we're, we're moving into a situation where we may, we may be able to vote on the summer ranges this evening, and that we may not be able to vote on other things this evening. I don't know what others, if others feel like we're moving in that direction or not. So I guess with respect to everything but the summer ranges, is there a way to, to document how we got to the ranges that we're at?
So I guess I would like to remind Julie and Michael about the reaction of council when we discuss this.
Right. But I think, I think what, what you're hearing from school committee is just sort of, I mean, maybe we need to take it offline and sort of figure out, because I think what we're hearing is it's difficult to stand behind rates, and we don't know how, why they're here, right? So I respect that, I think that's, those are valid concerns, so let's perhaps table that piece of it this evening, unless...
Another possibility, there is a workshop on Tuesday. I won't either, unfortunately.
The workshop agenda is full. Sorry, that was very loud.
So, so I think there may be a simple answer to Ms. Monopoly's question about the min-max in some of these categories being $25,000 or whatever. I mean, I can, I could offer what I thought would be an explanation, but I don't think it's my job, so can anybody else want to, or...
You guys discussed the range?
I mean, just why some of the ranges are broad.
So I guess...
She asked a question, why are some of the ranges broad?
So some of the, so the breadth of some of the ranges would, they depend on experience that somebody brings into the position. If you think specifically about principal position, you have experience, you have complexity of school, you have complexity of program, there are different factors that, that could, years in the system, years as a, years in education, so there's a, there's a range. I think the other thing that is important is just sort of, again, continuing to use the example of, of principal, that's a, that's a 12-month position, and some of our 195-day positions have, you know, salaries that are in the, you know, high 1-teens, you know, 118, 119, and into the mid 120s. And so, you know, if you think about the gap from a 195-day position to a year-round position... position, from, from that, from that to, say, you know, 130 to 135, 140, and there's actually not, the gap is not huge. And in fact, you know, it, it, it's, you know, if you think about it on a sort of a weekly basis or a daily basis, it's actually less pay per day, but given the length of the contract. So, so, so that's, so there, you know, in terms of the principal contract would be the, 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 the part of the wider range. And then, a higher range for high school, because our high school, in particular in Brookline, is the size of many small districts. So, it's just, it is a much more complex job, as complex as an elementary principal position is, the, the, the job of the high school, the head of school is just a, is a vastly more complex job, and I think always will be on Brookline. So, that's, I think, gets to, for, for those two ranges, which I think are the ones that are, well, the elementary principal is most relevant right now.
Mr. Perlman, and then Ms. Scottow.
So, Mr. Glover raised exactly what my questions are. I'm sure that there are very good reasons for why these ranges are what they are, but I think it would be helpful to have that formally articulated. Mr. Bott just went over some of those reasons. And if we maybe had even just a paragraph about each position, about what the rubric is, what, what criteria that we are looking at, I think that would be helpful, because to Ms. Dittkopf's point, it's important to have a philosophical foundation behind these pay ranges, so that everyone understands, and that it's not shrouded in mystery.
Excuse me. I clearly have less problem with these than a lot of other people. I think one thing that we have to consider is some of these, some of these groups have two people in them, and some of these groups, like, if you look at deans and directors, there are two people in number one, and in number three, there are five people. And this kind of inconsistency, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but if you have five people in a group, and one of them has been here for 15 years, and one is new, your range is going to be much, much larger than if you have two people in the group, and they, they're both fairly new. I assume that if everybody in a group left, and you had two new people that you were hiring, you might end up with a smaller range that particular year, but maybe not. In, in any event, it has to do with many factors about why there are differences in these ranges. And largely, it's number of people, how many years they've been here, complexity of their jobs. And we could list all of those out, but the bottom line is, when you begin to look at some of these, and you see so many people in them, you begin to think, well, of course, that's why there's a discrepancy in amount.
I don't, I don't think, Barbara, that the number of people in a range has to do with the range.
Well, of course it does. If one has been there for 20 years, and one has been there for one year, the person who has been there for 20 years is going to get a raise each year.
But the range is not, the range is.
The range is not a percent.
If, if the range is not moving, yeah. I mean, the range, the range is a cap at some point.
Well, the range is a cap, but if you have somebody.
So, you could have been there 15, 20, 30 years, and you could be capped.
But I doubt at the, with these.
So, it doesn't make any difference how many people are in that range, is what I'm saying.
Right. But, and, and even if there are only two people in the range, and one person has been here 25 years, and one person has been here one year, that range is going to be fairly wide.
Not if we set the range for that job.
Well, but you don't leave it the same way. When a person reaches the top of the range and has been here for 5, 10, 15 years, you are going to add more money on the top, and the range is going to increase.
I think Ms. Scottow's point is that for some categories, we know exactly who these employees are, how long they've been there, and for other positions, we know it'll be relatively new people, so the range is going to be narrower. I understand it on that level, but I think that for the general public, and even for ourselves, it would be helpful to just spell that out, even in two sentences, say that this criteria was selected based on a combination of comps and these other categories, and here's what they are. And that way, we know, and it's clear.
Currently, we must have a range, you have, because they're not all at the same pay level. Like, all the principals are not at the same pay level now, so.
You don't have a group range.
Not a voter range, but there is a range.
There is a range, yes.
A range of salaries.
People are paid a range of salaries.
So, I, I think, as, as Mr. Glover said, that a number of questions have been suggested, have been raised, and I'd like to recommend to the committee that we table the discussion about the ranges to the next school committee meeting, and ask that you come back with those sort of responses and to the questions, and then perhaps we could address the summer rates more.
Which questions are going to get addressed by the next school committee meeting? Some of these are lots and lots of work, and some of them.
Questions, questions that I've written down, that people said, are, are these the right ranges? I think it would also, I wrote down, that it would be helpful to see where our employees fall within the range. So, how many individuals are in each range, where they fall, like, on a scatter graph would be helpful. Why the range is set as it is? Are there other things that people would, that would find, and an explanation for why there's variation within the range?
I, I think would, if I understand what you're getting at, is we may be able to sort of get to the reasons why these ranges are the way they are on this paper, but it may not answer your ultimate question in terms of the philosophy, and whether we have all the right comps, and all those other deeper questions.
So, I'm one person, but no, it doesn't answer any of my questions. My questions are things like, as we think about the organizational structure of non-aligned people, what is our consistent job classifications? We know we have way too many titles, we know we have way too many, like, inconsistencies, so just, it starts with Ms. Dunn's point about job classifications, and understanding for all of our non-aligned personnel, we need to think about a rational job classification point of view. That's the first thing. Then, what you do is you have a compensation philosophy, which is, do we want pools? Do we want steps? Do we want freedom given to the superintendent? Like, what do we, what, what is our philosophy? And then, there's a set of questions about matching those two, the job classifications with our philosophy, and then you put comps next to it, and you say, so where do we want to be? And then, you can, then you can do what you just described. But it just feels, for me personally, like, I have been struggling with this vote for years, because we have never gone through the process. So, it's one thing for me to say, I basically trust that the superintendent is not going to go rogue, basically because he doesn't have any money to go rogue and do something crazy. He has $7,000, I think, so go to town. But it just seems to me that it's, I don't feel like I can vote on a compensation-aligned pay rate, whatever it is, pay rate, pay rates and pay ranges, if I can't explain it to someone. So, I don't like voting on things I can't explain to other people. So, for me, it's not a two-day exercise. For me, it's actually.
I was saying the same.
Everybody else can, everybody else can vote the way they want, and I won't be here Tuesdays, you can vote it, but, okay.
No, I understand that. I mean, I think, I, I think we, there's some work that can be done before, probably not Monday, but before, or Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday.
No, I was not, I was not suggesting the workshop. I was suggesting the next committee meeting.
There, there may be some work that can be done, but certainly to get at everything that you're suggesting is not going to happen within the next two weeks. I understand that. But we should start with the first step, and, which is thinking about how we got to this point, right? And sort of making sure that we understand that.
Your first step was, was that, not that, wasn't it?
No, not your first, not necessarily.
Oh, Susan's first.
Miss, I feel like Ms. Dittkopf's step is, is all of it, that, you know, and I was talking about my first step.
Okay.
Different steps.
I would like to suggest that we do vote the summer in positions, and I think there are some that are also in some of the other places that's not under summer. So, anything that is going to be paid for the summer, we vote. However, I would suggest that we put this whole issue into finance.
Don't do that.
A wonderful discussion.
I have said, I previously said that, yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I missed that one.
It's a different meeting.
Oh, a different meeting.
And that's how it ended up in the sheet.
I just, I.
Why not?
There are concerns about.
I think we do.
No, so there are concerns about having it just in finance, non-aligned employees just in finance, because negotiation, you have comp, this is employee.
Joint meeting.
This is employee compensation, and it needs to be, I think, to Ms. Dittkopf's point that she has made is, how does this compare and align to our collective bargaining agreements? And there needs to be some alignment there, and there needs to be some mindfulness there. I take this conversation really frankly that we should be putting on our goals for next year is a non-classification, a classification plan for non-aligned employees is really, that's really ultimately to answer this question, what needs to happen, and to go through that, so that needs to be, I will be putting that on Lisa's and my goal for 2020 on the goal sheet, that this act, this needs to come into alignment, only because, primarily, for everything that's been raised. And then, what I now know today that I didn't even know the last time, which is, we continue to have a proliferation of stipends and/or pay rates that really need to be coming to the school committee. So, what, my first part of my, solving my problem was to just have approved pay rates and ranges three years ago, or two years ago, is expanding, because there's now a whole issue of, like, how do non-aligned rates get established, how do positions get established? And as our budget's tighter and tighter and tighter, we need to have some procedures and systems in place for that. So, that's, I guess, part of what I sort of take from all of this. And that, I don't know that that would be a July workshop, but it certainly should be part of a goal, that we have an ongoing discussion around our non-aligned pay rates, and how do they get established, and what are they, and to, to the points raised. So, that's, and I would say that it should sit, still continue to sit in negotiations where it can be reviewed against any other salaries.
Fair enough.
So, can, I mean, I would, I would be pleased if someone would frame a motion about summer pay, the summer, summer stipends or summer program salaries and stipends, and just at least bracket which, which tables would be included in the vote.
I believe.
This is in, in support of the district's desire to be able to fill these positions.
It's all pay rates, starting at page four. Yeah, we need substitute rates changed for September and summer. So, I would say it's the page four rates to through page six.
Just to make sure we're very clear, there's a, a box that begins on the bottom of page six that carries over to the next page. Are we including those as well?
Eight, sorry, eight, should be eight. So, so, yes, eight, eight, because I, I do have FY '19 issues with many of. What page four through eight are, are stipends and, and hourly rates and summer rates. They're sort of all mixed in.
There's no changes.
Some we've changed, some we don't have changes, because we don't have market rates to change them.
They're mostly not going with a couple are standardized.
Yeah.
That's your request, pages four through eight? That's what you're asking for?
Is everyone generally comfortable?
Oh, so, wait. Are we?
Why didn't you make a motion? We'll find out.
Yeah, okay. So, so.
Yeah, let him make the motion for this.
Let's get a motion.
So, I will move that we approve the FY '20 non-aligned personnel proposed wages set forth on pages four through eight, that I had presented before you.
Just a second. Ms. Scottow, thank you very much. Now, Ms. Monopoly. We are open for discussion.
Questions? Because I just, I don't know what this title, well, so, what is an MCAS test assistant? What does that mean? What is that? What does that person do?
They administer the MCAS test and prepare and prep for the MCAS test that we deliver.
Don't classroom teachers do, I'm confused.
It's like the back of the house, like, the labeling, the organization.
Oh, it's like, is this a stipend for the person who unpacks the boxes?
Yeah, doing all the online setup.
Okay, okay, okay. And then, there's a significant change for Young Scholars Club, from 500 annual to 1,540. Could somebody just give me some context for the?
So, that's because we have, if you notice, we have three stipends, all sound the same.
Uh huh.
And so, the recommendation from the Young Scholars Program is they essentially have the same sort of level of duties and responsibilities, is to sort of make those rates comparable, A, because they sound the same.
So, there's someone who does Young Scholars Club, someone who does Young Scholars Literacy, and someone who does the calc, Young Scholars Calculus. So, there's three positions. I'm just trying to see if there were any other significant changes. Did anybody see any other significant changes?
Yep.
So, just one question about the club, the Young Scholars Club. Are other clubs, I assume the 500 annual is a club leader in general?
No.
No?
No, if you look, no.
Requiring clubs?
They range, the other club stipends that have been approved years ago are anywhere between 800 and thousand, multiple thousands, three or four thousand, depending on what grade level it is, and what duties and responsibilities there are. And those are not non-aligned rates. This is non-aligned rates.
This is non-aligned rates, okay.
The other stipend positions are aligned rates, and these are non-aligned.
I wonder, I wonder if some of these other positions have the same questions that we've had about the other ranges, and maybe if we amend the motion to just include the summer rates?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we identify the?
I think if you just tell me summer rates, I'll extract them from, that's enough of a direction, I can extract them, because they're not, they're not on one page.
It's not just the summer programs on page five?
No, they're embedded elsewhere.
Mr. Glover, you want to?
It would, and thank you. Please add substitutes. I need substitute rates. Substitute rates and summer rates. So, substitutes is a table on page four, first table, and summer rates.
And just to be clear, when you're saying summer rates, those are positions that are working over the summer, not positions that are hired over the summer for the year.
Working over the summer in their, in our ESY program and our other summer programs.
So, I think, just to ask this, Ms. Scottow, a second, if, if she is in agreement, then you.
Sure.
Yeah, she says yes.
Okay, just for the record, we're amending it to make it a motion only with respect to approval of the first table on page four for substitutes, and the ranges for individuals who will be working during the summer.
Any further discussion? One abstention. Any, that's it, one abstention. All right. Sure.
Sorry. Maybe at some other time, it doesn't have to be right now, someone could help me understand why some of these are non-aligned stipends, and some, some of these are aligned stipends, because I, I want to vote yes, so that people can do the work that they need to, but I have substantial, like, misunderstandings.
Be happy to share that with you.
Okay.
It does seem like for a job description in the school, it should be the same stipend, but you might have to vote them separately, because they're too, you know, but one would hope that.
I'm a big champion of the structural work that needs to happen to understand this, because I, I really want people to have the, I'm happy to spend extra hours in this really important work, because, how long, how long do you think this work take? I don't want to own it. I want to help. I want to help. Like, is this like six months, how many, like, what, like, do we have a timeframe for, like, about how much time it would take to do a project like this? In addition to all the lovely work we're already doing.
Watch out, if you keep talking, you might, you might have a job.
It's an ad hoc.
Ad hoc, so. Right, all right. Moving on, we have a food service update.
So, I am going to.
There's like notches in the wall, we're up to 23.
So, I'm going to lean in and introduce this, and ask Mr. Gillis to come up to the podium to answer any questions that the committee may have. Mr. Gillis? to answer any questions that the committee may have. Mr. Gillis provided this memo to me and for the school committee's information on updates to the current year's food service program. I'm remembering that the school committee agreed at the beginning of the year to, tentatively agreed to a subsidy of $91,827. And what Mr. Gillis will walk through is two areas of increasing revenue. You can see on the screen. I'll let, I'll let Mr. Gillis walk through these, but very briefly, changing out some of the menu items based on student preference to increase sales and then the à la carte sales that have been piloted at Pierce, rolling those forward. Some changes in food costs specifically with bagels, which Mr. Gillis can explain. I think quite relevant to the conversations earlier tonight, and I just want to take a moment. Mr. Gillis is recommending that we stop wrapping all of the fruit in plastic, which will save $3,500 and it reduces plastic from the waste stream. That has been a preference of the health department, but it is not a requirement. And so based on community feedback and the waste produced and the cost, I think that is a, a strong recommendation, as well as changing the way we assign substitute coverage in kitchens and savings on a bond. So I'll let Mr. Gillis walk through the details. And then I will take this back for the conversation of voting this year's contract for the final three months of school.
Thank you. That was an excellent acceleration of the presentation. So lunch sales, $11,800 by tracking what we've been selling this year each, each day and month and adjusting the menus to the items that the, that the students prefer. We can, we can get that data on a, on a daily basis by school and then in the aggregate, we've been making menu adjustments to improve our lunch sales. So they believe that we can revise that estimate and they being the food service management company, Whitsuns, by $11,100. And that's already been in process. I did get February's sales today. They weren't reflected in this, but it was our second best month of the year. November was actually our best sales month. Other than that, from September to November, it's been a steady increase and then increasing since then. Next item, à la carte sales. I think folks will recall that we have a fairly limited offering at our K8 system to be in compliance with our standards, beliefs and our wellness policy. We've had some very knowledgeable and active volunteers on the Food Service Advisory Committee that have recommended that we expand things just a little bit. So we've added chips and salsa, popcorn, and crackers and cheese and fruit plate as options. And kids have responded quite well to it so far with having different options from the list of eight things that we currently had. And we're going to try to rotate things through so that they don't get too bored with things. And when we've sold out or run out of things, the kids have been understanding and we'll, we'll get things in in the next couple of days. We're glad it's working. This is not to replace meal sales. It's not to replace a healthy diet. The items that are, that are offered meet the current federal guidelines as well as part of what you can have in Harvard's Healthy Plate, which is another lens that we try to look at our program under, that, you know, having some popcorn in the course of a day with a healthy diet is really not an unhealthy snack. To quote one person, you just, sometimes you just want a little crunch that is not a carrot stick or a celery stick. Food costs, when Whitsuns came in, they had a bunch of changes that some were specified in their presentation and then others were there on their own. They did ask me about changing bagel companies. And at the time, I made the decision and said, no, we're not really going to change bagel companies at this time. We have potentially a gift coming from one of the bagel companies. So I said, we really just want to keep that relationship and we're not going to change course with how we've been doing. Well, Matt, we could save money. I understand, but we'll, we'll look for other areas. At this point, we could save $5,000 for changing the bagels from a name brands, which we don't advertise, to a brand from one of our service providers. We've tested it. We haven't heard any difference, any negative feedback. I'm still waiting. We'll see what happens now that it's openly public. In, in the K8s, we're going to leave them where they are at, at the high school system. I'll take questions at the end because there really aren't too many more things. We talked about the payer. This doesn't have to be permanent. Should we start having uptick in any type of communicable flu, cold, whatever, we could always bring this back. The health department likes it. This is also Whitsun's preference, but it's, it's not required and the, we're, we're also always in favor of putting a little less recyclables or trash or food waste into, into the stream whenever we can help it. And then last but not least was sort of how we staff the buildings with substitutes. So, well, actually not last. We had a performance bond, which I'd like to talk to you about the contract. So this is a savings that's pretty much straightforward because a performance bond is what you get when you have a service contract with somebody, whether they're building a school or they're driving buses or in our, in this case, a food service management company. And if they don't fulfill their contract, you reach out to the insurance company to make up the difference of whatever the cost is to have somebody else come in and complete the contract. Whitsuns cannot produce a performance bond because they don't have a traditionally signed contract with us. They have a purchase order. We've been paying them on it, but they don't have that contract signed, which is one of those things we need signed. They could produce the bond and then I would sign off on reimbursing them and paying them for that expense. At this point in the year, mid-March, about two-thirds of the way through, I can say we trust them to finish out the year and not quit and walk away or go out of business. But if the school committee or the superintendent or deputy superintendent said, no, Matt, we want the bond, it would be prorated for remainder of the year in the estimated number of sales and we could have that expense. That would be about it. And just so folks are aware of a couple of the lenses that we try to look under as we make edits, revisions, try to improve the program. We look at the Harvard Healthy Eating Plate. It's there for you if you want to take a deeper look at it. And then there's the, it's called MyPlate, the government program. And they're really strikingly similar, other than you can see the vegetables being a larger, large portion, proteins, whole grains, fruits. It's fairly similar in size here. The big difference there is dairy and more water. The wording is carefully chosen on both. Meeting with some students today, food advisory at the high school, you know, one of the things that the kids asked for was to have bacon and club sandwiches. And then it got pointed out to me in Harvard Healthy Plate, you know, one of the things to avoid is bacon, cold cuts and other processed foods. So this is where we try to balance what the students want to eat with what research and professionals in the field are telling us are the healthy habits we're trying to, to come across with. So will bacon hit the menu? Probably. Will it be just one time of the month? Yeah, it's not going to be a regular part of it. But we're trying to, to balance that so we can make, whether it be sushi, bacon or hot dogs, or some of the things that are more popular that might not always be as healthy or more expensive to, to produce and procure. We want to be able to try to balance what everybody wants so we can have a successful program because having bake, it says avoid, it doesn't say never eat it. So having it, you know, once a week, once a month is probably not something that's, that's too unhealthy. I like bacon, sorry. So at that point, if there are any questions or any concerns, I think we've asked, does the school committee accept these changes?
I was wondering, so on the first page where you're talking about revenue, you have the sales revenue projected to be short 126,031 from the budget. Does that, that is before we take into account all of these other things that we've hopefully reclaimed, reclaimed some expenses in revenue?
So we're, yes, we're, we're looking at, at the end of January. February was a little bit better than we anticipated. So those numbers should shrink a little, but I got them this morning and I, I spent most of my days in meetings. So I haven't had a deeper dive into the analysis, but we're still moving in the right direction. And I very much like to keep us moving that way. Yes, so we were, we're, we're looking at being short about $126,000 short in revenue for what they call type A lunches or reimbursable meal sales. The, the whole lunch, it met the requirements of, of MyPlate because that's what the government requires in order for it to be a reimbursable lunch. We're making that up. We've also been able to reduce expenses, operating expenses.
So I guess, so my question is, if you have the 126 and then you say we anticipate another 11,800 in sales revenue, that isn't it, that is part of the projection that it still gets us to 126 shortfall?
That would be, that would be after. You have to accept the, the changes. Some changes we make on a day-to-day basis, managerial, and others are, are kind of more changes to the program. So I don't want to say we're, we're moving towards more popular meals and we're not going to be trying out as many things as we were trying out over the last year, year and a half that maybe some of the parents were rooting for. I'll pick on the quinoa veggie bowls because they were a flop. It was a good idea. It's a healthy meal, but it just didn't translate well to traditional school lunch day. We've had, just this morning, conversations about more vegetables being available and being kind of more of a primary front and center part of the options that the kids choose from. We're just working on, on how we get there. We have been able to reduce expenditures in, in other areas to, to make up that difference. So at the moment, excepted those changes, it will, we would be short about $97,000 instead of 91,827. Difference in round numbers is almost 5,300. And I think through the rest of the year, we might be able to make up that difference and live within the, you know, tentatively agreed upon 91,827. What you don't have is a spreadsheet that itemized all the details into it. That in order for me to take what Whitsuns gave me and put it out there, it's two pages, 11 by 17.
So I think that.
I like you folks that wear glasses and you folks that don't, but I didn't want to force, force your optometrists to have another meeting.
So I think the short answer to the, to the question, I appreciate all the detail, is that the $126,000 in, in food shortfall is then balanced with, with the potential, so, you know, the $3,500 for eliminating plastic wrap of fruit is deducted from that, that amount. So it's just, it steps to, it steps that are being taken, this is really to inform the committee and make sure that we have the consent of the committee for these, for these changes, but to, to continue to work to keep the program as close to the already overage amount that, that was previously discussed and.
Get it lower.
Or get it lower.
So, yes, I agree with that. And I, I don't have a problem with any of this except for the bagels. And I'm a little, I remember a few years back, there was almost a bagel war because the kids were not happy with the bagels that were coming in.
A little before my time, so I heard that.
Well, that's why I have the history here.
Why we're not changing them at the high school.
Ah ha. Okay. Have you had enough of a sample? Can I just?
No, I was going to answer your question with bagels. That was when they reduced the size of the bagels.
Yeah, I remember.
Right, it was due to.
I think it was also where they came from, but.
Yeah, but that was, that was a requirement of a, the calorie requirement.
I understand. I'm just asking, have you sampled a large enough sample on these bagels to know that they're going to sell? Because we can save the money, but if we don't sell them, it's not going to do any good.
Um, yeah, I believe so.
And do you have to do this for a long period of time? Can you sample it for a week? If it doesn't work, go back to what we had?
Well, I believe it's already started. To test a little bit as to whether or not it would work, you know. So we have products that, that come in and sometimes that specific product isn't available that week and we have it on the menu already. So they have to substitute it with another company's product. So from what I'm told, and I'm not checking the labels of the stuff on the packages in the kitchens, that we did do that and that nobody complained. So this is one of the solutions we can do that would work. But before we start, I've also turned down some, some things where, where we post a name brand product in there, there was, well, we could save money if we change it. And I said, we can't do that because we, it's, there's sort of a truth in advertising that we need to keep if we want to keep our, our credibility. So when we review the whole program in greater detail in the very near future, that will be discussed with premium lunch prices.
Matt, could you just talk a little bit about the savings with substitutes, are not getting substitutes? At some of the schools, the staff is very lean.
It is.
So if somebody was absent, they would be in a tough place to make it happen that day. So where would those, where would they come from?
So in, we track the meals per labor hour in the buildings and that gives us an idea of how close we are on a kitchen or school level as to how close we are to being able to break even, at least in that, in particular kitchen. So your two and three-person kitchens and largely your four-person kitchens, we can't really go without not replacing a substitute there. That leaves two other kitchens where we have, we have, we have staff and we might be able to make an adjustment. When you get to a two-person kitchen, it's impossible. Sometimes you can have a three-person kitchen or, last year, Pierce was a five-person kitchen. We made the decision before this year started to make it a four-person kitchen and it's worked out rather well. And I will give all the kudos to the ladies that are in that kitchen because they work really hard and they work well together. And if you ask the Pierce community how they like it, alls I get is compliments from the staff and a variety of staff and some of the students that the program is, is better. And it's, it's consistently tracked up all year. So we think we can, we can make that work. If participation or the quality starts to, to suffer, I'll probably make it, be back to say, we need to make another change or that change failed. But we have to be able, we can't continue to operate the way we have been without trying to make changes and expect it to come out okay. It just won't work. I mean, that's my belief. So when we're making adjustments that are, you know, to be viewed as significant, I want to share them with you.
Do you need a motion or is this, this is just the general sense that we agree with? You need a motion? No?
I think so. Oh, with on the, there's a contract.
The contracts.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Simon.
Um, yeah, so actually the Food Service Advisory Committee came up today in legislature and I was actually kind of surprised to receive a lot of frustration from the students that not only, well, I'd say the overall main frustration was that the advisory committee was meeting. Besides the very first meeting, every school meeting was during the school hours, which made it very challenging for students to be able to attend it. And I also received from at least two student council members who attended the first advisory committee meeting, they felt like their voices were not heard in some, for some reason or in some way. I was not there. So I can't speak exactly as to why. And then also there was a little bit of confusion today with regard to the meeting at PHS because the, this meeting was actually during X block and lunch, which a lot of students have free. So a lot of legislature members, students were planning to go during first lunch. And I don't know if the meeting ended early, but when they got to the room it was supposed to be out, they, there was no one there. So, yeah, there has been a lot of frustration from specifically student council members.
Well, I appreciate the, the feedback. The first meeting we had, we, we learned from the students that it would be better to do it. it during the X Block when more students were free and that's when it was scheduled today. I'm not sure exactly how it got communicated to folks in the aggregate, students in the aggregate. However, we did invite the students to bring all their friends to the next meeting that wanted to come. And we took suggestions, one of them was for more condiments. These are things that we can do, so that should be coming up, you know, in the near future, in the next week or so. We started a survey, they did a lot of work with a two-pager. I really appreciate the kids' efforts, but he only had two people respond. So we're going to start to take some of those questions and concepts and put them into digital survey with dropdown menus so we can get more usable data to try to help and improve the program.
Just want to point out is that when the meeting started during X Block and then the committee actually moved up to the high school to see, up to the cafeteria to actually see lunch and participate in lunch. And the reason we did that was from some of the direct feedback from the meeting during X Block from the students that were able to attend, because we wanted to actually see for ourselves what some of their concerns were that were happening. So we were actually still there, so it's really unfortunate that we did not, or were not aware that first lunch was going to become part of the student piece of the meeting. So I think we had a communication piece. If we had known that, we would have actually left a note to tell you where we went. But the next meeting will be the first, one of the first two weeks of April at the X Block and we have some email addresses. So if you can share with us a good way to communicate out to the rest of the student body, that would be great. The feedback from students has been phenomenal. One of the things we did check with them on was their interest to have the deli line open more often or consistently and that had been being closed when we didn't have enough staff at the high school. So that is a change that the Food Service Director Woodson's made with the staff at the high school, that the deli line not be closed when we have, that we close other lines. So we checked in with the students, did that happen? Is that happening? Do you notice? And so we got that feedback as well as more. So definitely want to make sure that we keep the communication open and avoid the misfire. So I'd love to hear sort of how we can make sure that people know, the students know where we're at. Thank you.
So, Mr. Perom.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Simon. You mentioned that there were some students who said they didn't feel like they're being heard. Do you know what it was that they wanted to be heard about specifically?
I mean, yeah, again, I was not at that meeting, but just, I don't know if they felt like they didn't have the opportunity to speak or if what, or if their opinions that they did speak, they felt like weren't responded to in some way. But that was the general message I received. And that's also from only like two students in particular that I got that feedback from. And also I was just wondering, like, how many students were at the meeting today roughly?
Today, there were five.
Five, okay.
First meeting, there were three.
Yeah, I just think personally that you'd be more likely to get a lot more students at these meetings if they were not during school because a lot of students during X Block have other commitments.
Do you have a suggestion, whether it be before school or after school? Because we're trying to make it as convenient as possible to get a significant amount of student feedback.
I'd say after school would probably be the best option for students.
Probably soon, right? We're in between sports seasons right about now?
Yeah, also a lot of sports practices sometimes start at like 3:30 or 4:00 after school, so sometimes they have a little wiggle room.
Thank you.
So I now have the unenviable position of asking the school committee to consider voting the contract for this year at Mr. Glover's direction, at the direction of the school committee and working closely with Mr. Glover. I took the foods, this draft agreement, this is the same language you've seen before, and took it to your outside council's office for review and a contract attorney reviewed it, considering the concerns that Mr. Glover had raised, that was a good summary of all of the concerns of the school committee. The general consensus of that review is that the contract, without a contract, the liability of the committee is for the, is potentially for the full amount in the contract, anything above the 91,000. And as you see, we're running, we are running a deficit above that. And so that with the contract, that would certainly, by agreement, cap that deficit amounts. I think there was some agreement with the preferences that Mr. Glover expressed, but also guidance that at this point in the year, that the most important thing for the committee was, is to cap your potential financial liability. And so with that, I believe I'm bringing a recommendation to vote it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that not, just speaking for me personally, I'm not crazy about the way the language is, but given for the reasons that Mr. Ba explained, I'm comfortable enough moving forward with this for the sake of getting something in place so that we can make sure we get our reimbursement, so that we can sort of put this to bed for this year. And also with the understanding that the sort of, the backside risk of anything is not excessively high in my mind. It's, you know, the maximum exposure that Woodson's has is the amount of their fee for the year, which isn't a huge number. And if for some reason the language were interpreted to not even allow them to, or to prohibit them not even to pay that amount, we're not talking about a huge number. The fee is, I don't remember what the fee is.
Which one is it, the management fee or the mentor?
The management fee, the 41,040.
So it's a $41,000 exposure. What's that? It's both fees together, I'm sorry.
Seventy-six.
So it's a $110,000 exposure. We have enough assurances, or some assurances from Woodson's that despite what the language, despite the murkiness of the language, it's their full intent to honor that obligation. So with all that said, I am willing to make a motion to approve this amendment as written.
We have a second. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Open to discussion. We've talked about this a lot.
At this, I mean, going along with what Mr. Glover was saying, at this point, you know, we have three more months of food and we paid them six, seven months. You know, let's, we're in the process of finding a new firm or at least it's out for an RFP.
He's out.
RFP and the director is out too. So at this point, I think I would vote yes. Let's have this, if it protects us at all. I doubt it does because they'll come up with some reason why, why even if we go over, they're not responsible, but let's at least have a contract. I don't see any other-
So in the interest of moving our schedule along, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the fiscal year contract before us, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. All right.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Gillis for all of his hard work on this and Ms. Dunn trying to land this. So thank you very much and thank you for all the recommendations.
So I now have the easy part of the evening and I would ask, part of the presentation, I'm going to give the committee an update on our early childhood, early education program and some updates on the Newberry sites. You have some maps coming before you and I will walk through the information on these three maps in just a few moments. I'll also be projecting the maps, so for anyone who's watching, they will be coming. So I want to start with the conversation about our early education program and just talk about our current status. And so we currently have early education across a number of sites. So BEEP at Beacon and Putterham are two leased sites and we have between these, at BEEP on Beacon, we have four classrooms, so one preschool, three pre-Ks, one RISE classroom, 62 students. At Putterham, at Temple Emmith, we have, also have, we have five classes, two RISE, three pre-K, one preschool. We also at Putterham have an extended day program. I'm sorry, six, thank you. Yes, five and six, thank you, Ms. Trelefsky and Ms. Fetterspiel for my poor, catching me on my poor addition skills. At the Lynch Center, we have four classes, so three, I'm sorry, five classes, three pre-K. Now I've set myself up, so I, a preschool and one RISE. We also have an extended day program there. Coolidge, two classes, and then Driscoll and Ronkel, one each, and Heath, two pre-K classes. And so you can see sort of the current layout of all of our BEEP programs. So our existing leases for information, so for the five classrooms, two offices, including a conference room, a workroom and an indoor play space, the Temple Ovai Shalom for BEEP on Beacon, the cost in fiscal year 19 is $218,000. For our six classes at Putterham at Temple Emmith, including additional space for a nurse's office, an administrative office, two conference rooms, two therapy spaces, a sensory room, indoor play space and a break room, that lease in fiscal FY19 is $298,000. And then additional lease that we have is at the Brookline, it's called the Brookline Educational Resource Center, more commonly known as 24 Webster Place. And that's where we have offices for 49 people, 44 PSB staff and five steps to success staff members. This includes conference rooms, evaluation rooms, kitchen and reception area. This is where our Office of Student Affairs and all of our enrollment takes place, a lot of early education classes, facilities spaces, adult community ed, so a large, our Metco offices, so a large portion of our operations are in that leased space, which this year is a $200,000 lease. I'm also sharing on this slide, it's in a sort of different color at the bottom, gray out, is the Spurber Center. And I share this just so that the committee can start thinking about the fact that the Spurber Center is something that may need to relocate depending on the Pierce project. Two reasons. One, MSBA would not reimburse for the reconstruction or renovation of that space. And so it's a non-reimbursable cost to have offices in the MSBA project. The second is that that is square footage on a prime corner of a very tight space. And so I just want to have the committee start thinking about the fact that in addition to our current lease spaces, we need to start thinking about as we approach the Pierce renovation expansion and MSBA project, where may we need to relocate our, the offices that currently are in the Spurber Center and what are some of our options to do so? So what, I don't want to go into that yet. What I want to, just before I transition into Newberry, what I want to say is that as the committee knows, but potentially not everybody watching knows yet at this point is that, you know, approximately a little over a year ago, the school committee and town were approached with the opportunity to enter into a lease for a donated building, a building to be built, and in fact, not donated to the town, but leased to the town for a dollar a month plus the cost of operation. And that was the building at 127 Harvard Street, the proposed building. The operating costs were projected to be approximately $100,000 a year for that space, which in sort of its final iteration would have had five early education classrooms. And so certainly a lower lease cost than the five classrooms say at Ovai Shalom. The donor of that building, you know, subsequently or following both the school committee and the select boards signing the lease, both boards voting and signing the lease, decided to change paths with the project. It is currently pursuing an option of building private early childhood center at that site and has begun the process with the town. The, I believe, the building commission, the select zoning board.
The planning board.
The planning board recently. And so, so, you know, as you know, that space, you know, due to that change in plans from the owner of the property is not a space that is available to the town in the future. Now that is tied with the conversation, part of the conversation about the Newberry College property. And so I want to walk the committee through a couple of, with a couple of conversations around the Newberry property. And I want to frame this conversation in, just for, as everyone at the table knows, but for everyone in the audience, the current map of Brookline and our schools. And so if we start in North Brookline, you have the Lawrence School Zone, you have the Coolidge Corner, Pierce, Driscoll, Ronkel, Lincoln, sort of this shape here. This large area in the middle is Heath's core zone and then here in South Brookline is the Baker Core. This does not show buffer zones and the buffer zones are actually quite large. Just as a reminder, the, for example, there is a four-way buffer in South Brookline that extends as far down as sort of here, which is a four-way buffer between Baker, Heath, Ronkel and Lincoln. Almost this, from this line north is a buffer between Lawrence and Coolidge, for example. So these are the core zones, but we have very large buffer zones in our core districts. So this is the current, just to highlight, these are the current districts highlighted color for Ronkel in, I'm sorry, Driscoll in blue, Ronkel in orange, Heath in green and Baker in yellow. Now this is a diagram of a potential impact of a school at Fisher Hill. If you assign, so this is not a redistricting exercise, but if you start at the Fisher Hill site, at the Newberry College site and start assigning students outward, in an outward radius, this pink is the area that would be required to, where students live to fill a three-section school at the Newberry College site. Again, not a redistricting exercise, but to give a scope of what that outward assignment would be, the diameter, the radius, I'm sorry, the radius out from the Newberry site. I think it's important to note that that- I think it's important to note that that is Ronkel School right here, and that is Lincoln School right here, I'm sorry, Heath School right here, and Lincoln is right on the edge here. And so, you have a district that grows, you know, and, you know, it doesn't capture Lincoln simply because of sort of a stop here on Boylston, but incredibly close to Lincoln. More important is that it is a district that encompasses the current location of Heath and Ronkel. I think a few other facts that are important is that the school at Fisher Hill is within 1,500 feet of Ronkel and Heath, so less than .3 miles. It's more, it's closer to 1,000 feet from Ronkel at the top of the hill, and more closer to 1,500 feet from Heath School. It doesn't create a school that's walkable for students who are currently driving, and so if you, sort of going back to current districts, much of the driving happens sort of here, I'm not quite doing that circle right, but sort of in this portion. And in fact, the 79 students assigned to transportation that go to Heath have buses that start over on this side of town and head over, so another fact. And growth at Hancock Village in this scenario, if you look at what you're left with in terms of Baker as a four-section school, it is incredibly small area, again, not redistricting, but filling in Baker in a radius out from the current location of Baker. When you get right here, not even to the Parkway and the Putterham circle, you have filled Baker with four sections of students. So, you know, again, you know, as Hancock Village expands, you have the potential of students from Hancock Village and other parts of South Brookline having to travel and drive incredibly far to school. So, and sort of a final slide as a reminder, this is what was presented at December Town Meeting, and this is not as easy to look at because this includes the density of census tracts in it, so I apologize for that, but having, wanting to have consistency of the, of what was shown at December Town Meeting. What this shows is that at a, with a school at Baldwin, having to combine six sections in South Brookline, you have this line here, which is basically all south of Route 9. You could just sort of hook this down a little bit right here, and you could have it, students, and sort of flip it up a little bit here, and you could have students, six sections worth of students entirely south of Route 9, assigned to both Baker and Baldwin School. And so, again, this keeps Heath, this is Heath in the center of a radius out from Heath, and so this, this keeps Heath in the Heath District, and keeps Ronkel in the Ronkel District. So, this is to give, again, to give the committee a sense, there are obviously some decisions made in developing this, a decision made of an assumption of three sections at Fisher Hill. It also assumes that Driscoll remains as three sections in this, in this scenario. So if you had three sections at Fisher and four on this map at Driscoll, the Driscoll blue would go out, would certainly go out larger. So, again, just want to, want to be clear on the, on the criteria.
Is there an assumption on district-wide programming at all in this?
There's not, there's not in this. The assumption here is, the, I'm sorry, the assumption here in this is that with the Baldwin site, that this does assume the current plan of district-wide programming for English-language learners and RISE students. And so, that portion of students, if you were to not have ELL and RISE traveling to the Baldwin site, the line would move up. But it's based on the assumption for the planning purposes.
Just to clarify, on the, on this one, Fisher Hill would absorb some of the RISE students?
Apologies.
And to?
You would achieve this, you know, the reduction of the program at Ronkel.
A similar way, as, okay. Thank you.
And as we look at, you know, other district-wide programs that we have, such as MECO or materials fees, as we, those are equally absorbed or absorbed the same proportions that they would be currently?
Yeah, there's an assumption of equal absorption, of course, depending on enrollment trends in any given year in kindergarten, it varies. And there are some years where, for example, Ronkel had very few students assigned either through, through either non-resident program, whether it was materials fee or MECO, because the enrollment was so high. And so, so it, there is variation when you look at the actual numbers, but this was, this assumes an even distribution based on the number of sections per school. So, so I share the BEEP information at the beginning, as well as some information, this, the, this, the school department was asked to begin creating sort of some idea, some sense, again, of outward assignment, what's the, what's the radial impact of different locations. I share the BEEP information as a precursor to these maps to be clear that one of the conversations in town that is happening in a part of, as a part of the Fisher Hill ad hoc group, I know I got that name wrong.
Newberry, it's a Newberry acquisition.
Acquisition Committee is the, looking at the site, the academic building as a, as a potential site for BEEP, as well as district offices. And so, a portion of that property, not the entire property, but that, that portion on the south side of the property for potential use for early education and town offices. So, that, the conversation has been happening in town as to whether some of the income stream that has been paid into rentals could go towards debt service for the purchase of a portion, some portion of that property. So, all conversations that are happening, just want to, just remind folks, again, sort of that, those straight-line differences. Fisher Hill to Ronkel is less than 100 feet, to Heath it's .28 miles.
Thousand.
I mean, 1,000 feet. Heath, it's .28 miles. To Lincoln is .66 miles. And currently, Ronkel to Heath is half a mile, it's .51 miles. And Ronkel to Driscoll is .56. And so, our schools are close, but they're not 1,000 feet. I'm sure there are a lot of questions.
Mr. Proman?
I just have a que, how would the, would the map look any difference if you looked at a potential Fisher Hill school as a two-section?
It certainly would. It would be a smaller radius, and we can, we can look at that. It would, it would, the pink would be smaller. I don't know for certain, so I won't guess at sort of what it would look like, but we can certainly apply that in and get the answer.
Well, wouldn't that, we have to. So you have to change, are, are we asking for a change in assumption so that we would, what would a scenario look like if we built a two-section school at Fisher Hill? And then where would the rest go? Driscoll? So then you would have to?
Yeah, Driscoll would then get larger. So, happy to run that assumption if that's.
Well, maybe Ronkel or Heath, but I just think it's important to do a comparison of whether we have all two sections.
One would assume that you, that Drisc, you would just proceed with the enlargement of Driscoll, if you may.
Or you would assume that you didn't.
Yeah, because you could say, you could be fiscally prudent and not.
Well, if it's two, if it's, you take the, if you take the Baldwin program and you move it somewhere else, but you don't make it bigger, then you don't make Driscoll smaller. I mean, if we're, I would assume, and Driscoll, you know, that's that model. You know, it's the same number of sections, right? This is a three-section Driscoll and a three-section.
Right. This is, this is the same number of sections, it's three new sections total. The assumption here is that the three sections, one, the question that was presented to the school department was, if you, if you constructed the total capacity on Fisher Hill, what would that, what would that potentially look like? So that was the assumption that went into it. Certainly can, can run the numbers for the assumption of two sections at Fisher and four at Driscoll, and would change it, again, holding the three section.
We should do, maybe you said this, adding on the side, you should still probably do the bigger Driscoll and a three at Fisher Hill as well, right? Just to sort of see what it looks like, because it may change what you do in future projects. I mean, it doesn't hurt, right, to sort of see what that looks like.
Maybe, I think, well, is some of the question, there are so many. Dear Lord, I hope we don't go down a path of relooking at everything all over again. But if we were, I guess I'm just having a little bit of a struggle of the, and what do we, you know, I think this is a useful exercise in seeing what a school at Fisher Hill looks like, and how close it is in proximity to where other students come from, and how our current catchments are. Are we, are we, as a school committee, wanting to go down the path of examining all kinds of different possibilities of if we, if we did this here and not there, and?
Well, I think we only asked for two other analysis, right?
No, well, I heard at least three. I heard at least Driscoll, Fisher Hill, we have Fisher Hill three, Driscoll three. If we looked at Drisc, Fisher Hill three, Driscoll four, that's one. If we had Fisher Hill two, Driscoll four, that's another. Or if we had, um.
There, these are such, there's so many assumptions, there's so many assumptions that go into these, because they're not factoring, we're not redistricting, we're not looking at all of the schools, we're, you know, and, and adjusting.
Right, and I think to that point, it does not have any of the 15 criteria that the school committee voted a number of years ago for redistricting. So it does not have, you know, income criteria, is sort of the example that the school committee typically brings up. All this is, is where students are plotted, sort of, sort of radiating out from the location, so.
And walkable, suppose, walkable schools that become less walkable.
Yeah, but the fact, the fact that, well, what, the fact that you did this makes, is going to make people think about it. So, there's a question of whether you should sort of do other things for people to think about, even if all of them are not necessarily grounded in what the actual reality will be. It's just if we're giving one idea, why not give others?
Well, but I think that, yeah, no, you.
I don't want to, I don't want to.
That's a, it's a valid question. The, I mean, the, the, the sort of pink reality here that jumps out is that you can either have a walkable neighborhood school in that district for Ronkel, if you look at the Ronkel outline, the square, or the diamond, if you will, of the dotted pink lines, that, yeah, the Ronkel District, right? And you can either have that, no, the whole, the whole existing district. Like, that can either be Ronkel's walkable neighborhood district, or it can be Fisher Hill's, but it just can't be both. I mean, it's sort of, that's the thing, is that's a walkable neighborhood for people going to Heath and Ronkel. And so you can walk to another school in that neighborhood, but it's not adding any walkers, right? It's still, you've, you know, you've sort of taken care of that.
Similarly, I mean, similarly, you know, in this, in this, you have, you know, again, Heath, you know, I mean, you're coming incredibly far to Heath, and so you're actually, you know, again, based on the assumptions that were created, you have, you know, two schools that are not walkable.
You've actually compromised walkability in the sense that it's not 100% clear that the pink families that live right next to Heath are going to actually walk to, up the hill. So, maybe you've converted a lot of walkers to drivers to get up to the top of Fisher Hill, and you've obviously, you know, by pushing Heath out of its district, you've made it a commuter school, more or less. I mean, some people will walk, you know, certainly a few blocks.
Well, this is the, one of the reasons why I think it would be a good idea to also look at Fisher Hill as a two-section. I agree, Mr. Glover, we might as well, so there's already one scenario that's being presented to us, and I'm not sure why it's being presented to us, but now that it is, we might as well look at the various permutations of it.
I don't know, I guess I'm just concerned about the exercise, seeing as how, like, it doesn't take into account, this map doesn't take into account a number of things like class size, socioeconomic disproportionality, geographic features, special education programs, like, all of the things that you mentioned were something that the school committee wanted. So this isn't even like a, this isn't even like a real map. We don't know that this is what it's going to look like, so it's, I'm not, I just don't know how useful of an exercise it is if it's not a true representation of what it would really look like.
Well, I mean, the, the.
Do you know what I mean?
Right, it's, it's.
I do more of them that don't really help us get.
Well, it's, it's the fair point, and, and this is in response to the, the direction that we received to, again, where from the, from each school, you know, from, if the school was built there, if you populated it out, then what's the impact? So, so again, it is, to everything you said, Ms. Monopoly, it is not a redistricting map, it is not, it's a response to the, the information, given the study that the town is engaged in, to look at, I think, the real challenge, I mean, quite frankly, I think it's, it's the real challenges associated with any type of elementary school on that property, given its incredible close proximity to Ronkel and Heath. There is some major compromise, you compromise significantly some combination of schools with another full school in that location. And it, it's, you know, again, it's sort of, if you think about the other map with a, if, with Baldwin, the Baldwin site here, you would have sort of a, a district that's more around this size, right? So you are thinking differently of distribution of students in South Brookline in a way that doesn't compromise both Heath and Ronkel. And so, I think that, that the iterations of this, this radiating exercise that the school committee is asking for, my, my belief is it would show continued, you would continue to compromise in some significant ways, both Heath and Ronkel. And so that was the question, a concern that I think was the driving factor of the question that came to the school department in the direction to begin with this map. So I hope that provided some, some more clarity.
So, so if you were to just go back to a four-section Driscoll and then add the two sections on Fisher Hill, the bright green wouldn't change. I mean, you, you could change it, but you're essentially just bumping the orange south.
Yeah.
I mean, you just push the orange down, and you take a bunch of pink, and you turn it, and you move it up into the blue.
Right, because Driscoll's not going to move into Coolidge, because the town just built all the capacity around, right? You know, it's, it's, there's the capacity at Coolidge, so I think that assumption is correct, that you sort of, you think about Driscoll sort of expanding.
Well, I'm also just saying, it's, you've got nine sections.
Yeah.
The blue, orange, and pink is nine sections. And if you want to model nine sections, but with a different nine sections, it might, the simple way to do it would be just to assume that you're changing colors within that, but the, the main issue is that you haven't built capacity in South Brookline to absorb South Brookline, and so those kids are, are having to all be drawn north instead of to a location in South Brookline. Oh, I'm, yeah, yes.
I was just going to say, at first glance, without going into it, it looks like a pretty good location for a BEEP program.
Good point.
Well, I just. It's just kind of in the center, and we need BEEP, so.
Yeah, we would need a bus to help get kids there, but other than that, it's, it's a perfect location.
Well, I think, I think especially.
And a building that, that wouldn't need, I mean.
Oh, it's going to need some work.
I think one of, if I may, one of the things that has been said, at least in the Facebook and some of the other places, I think even on, in the tab, that, you know, these are moving buildings. Well, that's not exactly true at all, especially not for the larger site, where there's a number of large kitchens in the basement, where there are small dorm rooms that were cinder block on both sides. It's, it would take, it would probably be a tear down and build new. But that is why the committee has, the acquisition committee, which I am your representative too, has asked for an architect and a engineering firm to look at the buildings that are there, give us an assessment, and give us a test fit, approximate test fit, of what could go up there, in terms of either a school, a BEEP program, BEEP plus the administrative office, offices, et cetera. So, what will go there will be a town process, that's been very clear from the selectmen, this is not. This is not, the acquisition committee is not deciding what's going there, nor is this deciding the, just as this is not deciding the, the, the boundaries. We're, we're looking at things, we're trying to, you know, be somewhat transparent in what we're looking at, but also being careful in terms of the acquisition committee and our strategies, so.
Just to Ms. Fettersfield's point as well, if you think about sort of as a possibility of a BEEP center, you have, if you start with Lynch, and then you have classes at Coolidge, we're building classes at Driscoll, there's a class at Runcle, classes here, there's two at Heath, three at Baldwin. You start having a distribution across town. And so, you know, it's, while it would be a larger site here, there's a distribution across town. Now, the question is with Pierce, right, there, there is not an easy path for BEEP at Lawrence. Lawrence is incredibly, the space challenge at Lawrence, like, there's no space that can be mined out of Lawrence. But with the, the project that's, that is beginning to move down the road for Pierce, there's potentially the possibility here. So you start thinking about distributions, obviously, you know, were that the path the town chose with a higher concentration here, but access across the, sort of the arc of, of town, which I think is a pretty, in, in many ways, a pretty compelling case, or a pretty compelling option.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, maybe if I could just add a few words on what's public that the committee has done, so that I can catch the committee up somewhat. We will also be going into executive session. But as I said before, we've hired, the town has hired C3, which is an engineering firm, to look at all the systems and all the buildings, to see if they're leaking asbestos, lead, et cetera, all those things that one has to deal with when one has children in any building, or adults for that matter. We've also hired Icon, an architectural firm, to look at the sites, see what, what the amount of work that would need to be done, what can be done, sort of to give us some big picture test fits, is, is the way it's being put out there. I'm trying to think what else. I passed around a brochure here of the Colliers International that has put together the brochure to, as the real estate agent for Newbury College. And so it has, you know, just maps and stuff. It's online, I'm not exactly sure how you go about getting to it, but I suppose if you go to Colliers, you can find it. I think, is there, I think that's about it.
At the bottom of that brochure, it has a lot of language around BEEP confidential, is that not true? In the first page, if you open the first page, it says on the bottom, it says it's confidential. So I'm just surprised to hear it's online.
Well, maybe it's not. Sorry, then this is confidential, and it was executive session stuff. I'm not sure. I think it's just pictures of the buildings mostly, so it's not anything that anybody can't see or take their own pictures. There's pictures that I think were posted by town meeting members. Town meeting members had a tour of the buildings on Saturday, I think it was, no, Sunday, sorry. And I don't know if anybody here had an opportunity to go to any of that. And then there was the committee, the acquisition committee toured it on Wednesday. And that's about it. And we are meeting, the acquisition committee, actually, one other thing. The acquisition committee has been meeting weekly. It's a very focused group that is working very well together with our real estate consultant, Sandy Tierney from McCall and something, I can't remember the last, it's McCall, help me? McCall, yeah, I think they work with Northeastern sometimes too, if I'm not mistaken. They do quite a bit, so they work with large institutions and communities to, they were involved with the Wellesley acquisition of the open space from Wellesley College, the town of Wellesley acquisition. And they've been very helpful, so more to, to come.
All right. We, we are up to Mr. Simon's report.
Um, so today's legislature, I mean, today legislature met and discussed a potential endorsement of the Environmental Action Club's referendum for the Green New Deal. We discussed it for a while and decided to table that discussion so we could focus on our substance abuse bill, which has been in the works for weeks. Myself and my co-chair, Ms. Maynes, met with Dean Redding and Dean Alexander in order to clear up some last, like, aspects of confusion with regard to the bill. And I'm happy to say that we finally passed the bill today. So there are now much more clear rules, not only for drugs, alcohol, and cigarette use, but also for the use of vaporizers and all drug paraphernalia in general. Considering the amount of effort that has already been put into it, and considering it has been reviewed by every single dean in the school, I'm very hopeful that Principal Meyer will sign it. Yeah, that was, I was going to touch on the Food Service Advisory Committee, but we already did that, so that's all I have.
Any questions for our student representative? Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
So first, I'd like to update the school committee on kindergarten registration. The good news is that we have done an incredible amount of outreach, far more than ever before, taking lessons learned from past years, and those efforts are really paying off. In particular, our families that are enrolled in BEEP are already enrolling in kindergarten. In previous years, that was happening much later, May, June, July. And so at this point in the year, on March 11th, we have 403 kindergarteners registered, and this is up slightly from previous years, from last year, where we, at this point, had 346 students registered. I do want to be clear to the committee, especially given my budget proposal and the lower kindergarten numbers for Pierce, that I do believe that this 16% increase is based on the outreach and the registration that's been happening for BEEP families now and over the past couple of months, as opposed to in the summer, when it, when the majority of BEEP families registered in previous years. So I do believe that despite the, or in the light of the good news of our families, incoming families registering earlier, we are not seeing, at this point, there, there's no indication of a trend of higher numbers. So we will watch that closely and continue to monitor in case there's a change in that, and I'll update the committee accordingly. I am pleased to announce that today, earlier today, I named our new principal at Baker School. I went over to Baker this afternoon to share the news that Mr. Torrance Lewis has been appointed principal of Baker School. If I had to take you to the letter that's in the pack, the announcement letter, I just want to take a moment and read it for those folks who are watching. I'm pleased to announce Mr. Torrance Lewis is the next principal of the Edith C. Baker School. I appointed Mr. Lewis through a thorough public search process and included multiple interviews, staff and community forums, and a site visit to the W.L. Chenery Middle School in Belmont. Currently, Mr. Lewis serves as the head of the upper school at the W.L. Chenery Middle School. The upper school serves over 700 7th and 8th grade students. It's worth noting that the Chenery Middle School has 1,450 students currently enrolled and is projected to grow to 1,600 as Belmont's enrollment continues to increase. During his tenure, Mr. Lewis has led school-wide community-building efforts, begun implementation of comprehensive social and emotional learning for students, overhauled the schedule to ensure both full access and appropriate supports for English-language learners and students with disabilities, and build a comprehensive child study and academic support process. Prior to joining Chenery Middle School, Mr. Lewis served as vice principal of the Cyrus Pierce Middle School on Nantucket. I do want to note that that spelling of Pierce is correct, it is a different spelling from our own Pierce. He was interventionist in Lexington Public Schools and taught 4th grade in Decatur, Georgia, and has taught a variety of elementary and middle-level grades in both Corribita and Brasilia, Brazil. It's also worth noting that Mr. Lewis is fluent in Portuguese and proficient in Spanish. One of the challenges in searching for a principal for K8 schools that many candidates have experienced in either elementary or in middle school. In Mr. Lewis, we have a leader with strong, diverse experiences which allow him to bring multiple new perspectives to leadership at Baker. The most impressive part of the search process was the site visit to Chenery Middle School. Joining me and Human Resources Director Lisa Richardson on the site visit were six educators from Baker School, Beth Curly, Kate Doherty, Sarah Harris, Joe Mitchell, Meredith Ritter, and Sarah Zekri. During the visit, the Baker educators met with a large group of Chenery, Chenery teachers. It's important to note to the committee that Ms. Richardson and I did not join that meeting. It was Baker educators meeting directly with Chenery educators. The response and feedback from Chenery was, team was overwhelmingly positive. The Chenery team spoke at length of Mr. Lewis's unwavering commitment to students, to staff, and families. They detailed his collaborative approach to all aspects of his work and his unyielding thoughtfulness, inclusiveness, and transparency. They described Mr. Lewis, the leader that the Baker School community said they were looking for when the process began. I'd like to acknowledge the committed efforts of the Baker Principal Search Committee and the many staff, parents, guardians, and students who participated in the search process. The active involvement of so many members of the community over the course of the positive and collaborative search process is what ensured its success. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Lewis as the new principal of Baker School. And I will schedule Mr. Lewis to come to an upcoming school committee meeting so that you can meet him in person. We are also in the process, he and I, of scheduling many opportunities for him to spend time at Baker, visit Baker, and start to get to know the community prior to July 1st. I shared an update, and it was actually at the last school committee meeting on the Coolidge Corner renaming, and we didn't get to the superintendent report, so just share, I will not go through all the details of the renaming process, but want the committee to know that we received 115 unique nominations. There was a little bit of a hiccup that some of you may have heard about, where 12 nominations were received actually through a feedback function on the website and not through the nomination tab. So in the original distribution of the names, they were not included. That, that was pointed out to us prior to the finalization of the selection, the student process for selecting semifinalists. So those 12 additional names were included, vetted, and some of those names made it through to the, the list of semifinalists. So I just wanted to, to share that with the full committee in case anyone asked you about that. There are two upcoming events. What's happening now is all the students who applied to participate in the process are now creating presentations for each of the semifinalists. It's 14 or 15, I don't remember the exact number at this point, where it landed. And those presentations will be shared with the Brookline community in two renaming nights, one April 3rd at the Coolidge Corner in the multipurpose room, and one on April 11th at the Brookline Public Library, right here at Hunterman Hall. So these nights are open to the entire community, we'll be doing a lot of outreach, and we'll be asking for feedback from the, from folks who attend those community forums so that then the students can review and consider all that feedback and finalize a list of three to five names to bring to the school committee to, to start, to start the elected board vetting process. So the school committee, then the naming committee, and then a town meeting warrant article. Brooklyn Education Foundation had their 22nd Annual 5th Grade Spelling Bee this past Sunday, March 10th, at Brookline High School. I was disqualified as a judge because my son is in 5th grade. So Dr. Nicole Gittens stood in for me. My son didn't participate, but I know a lot of 5th graders, so, so again, it's, Dr. Gittens was thrilled with the opportunity and jumped right in, acting as one of three judges for the spelling bee. I want to congratulate Pierce School student Owen Bergstein, who walked away the winner after spelling Supercilius in the ninth round. So congratulations to Owen on a job well done. I also want to share that a few weeks ago, February 27th, I joined the Brookline Education Foundation Board of Overseers at their annual breakfast at the home of Kate Lenis. Chair, the school committee chair, Mr. Pollak, joined me at the breakfast. It was a really great opportunity to talk about the many, many successful programs and projects, professional learning, and countless other opportunities that the Education Foundation supports throughout our district. So really, really just incredible, incredible opportunity. I want to share that some of the grants this year are helping us with the story of practices, interdisciplinary learning, the, working on the, I'm sorry, the, uh, just a blank. Literacy initiative. It will come back to me. Developing mathematical ideas, some professional learning for math, and some teacher grants this year are supporting educators in experiences as varied as attending a seminar in Finland and learning about the Finnish educational pedagogy to taking classes in California for a BHS Latin teacher. So just an incredible, incredible opportunity. I shared with the committee the update on 127 Harvard Street. Attached is a letter at the back of the report that the chair and I will be sending out to the community tomorrow morning so that there's a update on the building project as well as some of the work of the Newbury Acquisition Committee. So that is attached for your reference. And just some highlights, not all of the school visits, but I attended the Brookline Annual Boys to Men Leadership Conference, this year held at Emmanuel College. And as all our young men and young leadership conferences, this is absolutely an incredible conference. Special thanks to Dr. Zama for his leadership in ensuring yet another wonderful conference. Lincoln School held its annual declamation, and this is a process by which all Lincoln Middle School students either memorize a piece that is meaningful to them or write their own piece, memorize it, present it to all of their peers, and then sort of go through a process where 10 finalists present to, on the stage. Again, everyone has heard all of the presentations through the work, and it brings together 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. And I think what's just so amazing about it is that it's an annual event that celebrates individuality of each of our students. It provides our students with the opportunity to share their story, a little piece of their story, whether it is through someone else's words that is really meaningful to the student, or their own words. And it really builds strong bonds among students across the middle school, grades 6 through 8. And lastly, I want to share that the, last weekend, the BHS Drama Society's spring play, When the Rainbow Is Enough, was held, directed by Summer Williams. The play was based on the classic piece by Nasake Shange, featured a compilation of monologues and stories celebrating women of color told through poetry and dance, sharing experiences about growing up from girls into young women. This was the first BHS drama production with a cast made up entirely of women of color, many of whom had never participated in a drama production before. It was an incredible, incredible performance. And as I said in a message to the community to, it, I've seen many performances over the years, and this is one of the most powerful performances I've seen. So congratulations to the young women and to Summer Williams for just an exceptional, exceptional performance.
Do, can, do you remember off the top of your head what time the renaming nights are at CCS and the libraries, anybody?
Six to 7:30.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So actually, it's a great question. So there's a long, two-page notice after the announcement of Mr. Lewis, which is an overview of the renaming. And on the back is the details of what steps are happening in the process, and the times are on there. So six to 7:30. Thank you, Sticca.
So just one point about the, first of all, this is all great news, thank you. It's all, it's all exciting. I just wanted to talk about the Coolidge Corner School renaming for a minute. Just to Ms. Monopoly's point, I mean, April 3rd and April 11th seem far away, but they're actually not that far away. So I'm curious if people just have some ideas as to where these things should get... So I'm curious if people just have some ideas as to where these things should get publicized? Obviously, they would go out over Blackboard and TMA list and social media, but I just, the only reason I ask is that because these are supposed to be town-wide events and not just Coolidge events, and because they're supposed to be true community-wide, not just schools, we're used to talking to the schools. I'm just curious if people have ideas on where it should be publicized such that more people will see it. So for example, one person mentioned the Brookline Neighborhood Association email lists because that gets people who aren't necessarily parents. Anyway, so if people have ideas, I think it would be good to bubble them up.
So I think the tab, to send the letter to the tab, probably together with the other two letters about the new principal and the, so that, you know, they have more information. Possibly the BEU might want to put something in their newsletter or out to their sta, at least the devotion staff, Coolidge Corner staff. The staff who used to, to, the retirees.
I know.
I know. It's just informational, but, and if not, we could at least let John Dempsey seem to be the person who, and I could do that, I could send him this from, he's the, the person who has connections with most of the retired teachers from that school. And I think they would be interested in, in hearing it, and hearing the kids. So I think in both ways, it would be informational for them.
PTO, excuse me, PTO bulletins, I mean, that's the school community.
So I think the, just the individual neighborhood, neighborhood associations, you know, and also, I think, maybe frame it, send it to town meeting members, but frame it also as a request that they, you know, reach out to their constituents or communicate outward as town meeting members to, to spread the word.
And alumni.
Well, but we don't have a list. We, I don't know if we have.
No, but there's, there is a Facebook page, I think, that, from this.
I mean, do you have, I'm sorry, Buck. No, I just was wondering if we have some sort of, like, poster format that we can, like, literally post around town, like, at the library, I don't know, are we allowed to do that?
They're under development.
But I mean, I think we could put them, you know, at the public libraries, at, I don't know, Starb, I don't know, wherever around town, storefronts, no, I don't know. Maybe through a network of people who are supportive can help us distribute.
Another possibility would be to at least post it at the senior center. I think there might be people there who are interested. And if you get in touch with Frank Caro, who runs BICAN, it could be published through their network. In terms of the libraries, there's a big tween center there now at, at the Brookline Village Library, and if you get in touch with the librarian there, she might be able to get them enthusiastic about it.
So on to subcommittee and liaison reports, and I want to, because we have an order of business, I want to start with curriculum, because I think you're presenting a couple of courses for approval.
I'm going to present that course, and then I'll go over the rest of the reports.
Yesterday's curriculum meeting began with a presentation by Brittany Stevens from the Career and Technology Program for two new related courses at BHS next year. Basic introductory computer courses, such as Exploring Computer Science, are already in place, but a new robotics course called Autonomous Robotics 1 and 2 would allow students to move more easily into advanced computer courses. These courses, Autonomous Robotics 1 and 2, would follow one another, and as I understand it, could be taken more than once since they are essentially project-based. In addition, the project, in addition to the projects, the course will consider ethics, and I'm quoting, "The choices posed in, the choices posed in the design, implementation, and deployment of robots and software concerning them." We had a very interesting discussion about this, and I advise you to look at this. It's absolutely amazing what they are offering here. And I particularly like the idea that students can, if you are really interested in computers, you could retake the Autonomous Robotics 2 basically every year because it's project-based, and there are so many different things that could be done. When I heard this, I just have to say, when I was teaching, we were teaching kids in fifth grade logo, and that wasn't that long ago. And you look at this and you realize how much has developed that's available to students. I mean, these are certainly older students than I was teaching. But I think we at the curriculum committee were very interested and enthusiastic about this, and I'd like to make a motion, and then we can discuss, to approve this course for inclusion in the course catalog next year. Yeah? Second, good.
I was so sad, when I read this, the description, I was so sad that I couldn't be at the curriculum meeting to hear about it. It sounds so exciting, and what an amazing, hands-on, forward-looking course. And I like the project format, that you could build on the course each, you know, you could take it again another term or semester, however you want to word it, and, and build on projects before. I just thought it was really exciting, so I was sad to miss the deeper conversation.
Just to point out that they also noted it would not require additional funding or staffing. It would be absorbed within the department, the existing staff.
The other thing that I really like about the course is this embedding of discussion about computers and the implications of what you do. I think that's a very important, a very important something, try again. It's a very important thing for students to understand that everything about computers isn't simply fun and wonderful to spread ideas, but there are things that you have to be aware of, and that there are certain ethical issues around using computers and what you can do with them and what you can't do with them. So that is going to be very much embedded, particularly, I think, in the first, the first part of the course, and then we'll continue over into the second.
It's, so there are prerequisites, the Intro to Computing, there are two options, right? So in theory, could you take Autonomous Robotics 1 in, it says nine through 12, so could you take it, like, in the spring if you took, like, can you take Intro? I don't know if anybody knows.
I don't know when you can take Intro.
Can you ta, is that a class, is the Intro to Computing class something you can take, like, fall of freshman year so that you could then ta, okay, I didn't, I just didn't know the logistics, so. If you get in, right? So will there just be one section of each to start, I'm guessing?
It's hard to say.
I just also wanted to add that as a part of the same discussion, it was also brought up that computer science in general is a very important skill that we want our students to develop, and that those skills are going to start to be taught in other disciplines as well. So within math, within different types of science classes. So students will be exposed to it in a variety of ways.
All right, I think, give me a second.
We have it.
Oh, thank you. All right. On the motion to approve these courses to be added to the catalog for next year, thank you very much. That is unanimous. All right, so you have more of a report. We also have need of an executive session, and I know that there are members who have other things that they need to get to. So let's open it up to, subcommittee reports, starting with continuing curriculum, but ask that you make them to the point.
The second half of the meeting was an update on the math program review. And basically, people are, in the sixth, seventh, and eighth group, people are trying out the programs this year, and all but four math teachers in middle school have been doing it all year, and those four that aren't doing it have had one unit that they're doing as well. And I think basically people are very happy with it. One of the issues that came up had to do with professional development, and it came up in, as part of this discussion. And I could tell you more about the math, but I think I want to move into this because as we talked about it, we talked more and more about professional development and how difficult it is, given the current schedule in the schools to do professional development, that teachers are taken away from their classrooms, you can't always get substitutes, it's a huge problem. And we talked about it, and I haven't talked to Nicole about this because she wasn't there yesterday, but we've talked about looking at other possibilities for professional development as just one of the things that the curriculum committee might take on, just to think about what other districts are doing, how they're doing it, how we could, you know, fit, how we could make changes that would be productive. So that was the other thing. I also want to report briefly on the Lawrence School SIP meeting. Many of us on the curriculum committee attended that on Tuesday, March 5th, and it was a working committee where various groups met and worked about their, worked, talked about their ongoing projects. I happened to be on the student handbook committee, not be on it, but sitting with them, and they were talking about intertwining behavior policy, the new behavior policy, with the handbook, the school handbook. And since this handbook is going to be largely online, we talked about the fact that you could have links to specific things. They don't want to repeat huge pieces from the handbook, but they want, they would like to have something like links that they could, they could then put into their school handbook that would link them to appropriate places on the townwide website, and it would make it much easier for them to deal with. So that seemed to be a good idea. There were, there's, there was a, one group discussing arrival and dismissal, and how you could manage that, and how parents could collaborate, get together, talk, and how did that work when they really were not entering the school. And then there was another group working on the DICE committee, and I never heard what the DICE committee was, and I wondered, Ellen, were you?
Diversity.
Oh, diversity and inclusion, yes. I just kept thinking, DICE, DICE, without thinking about it as, yeah, an acronym. Anyway, our next curriculum meeting will be on Tuesday, March 26th. We will not be meeting on the Wednesday in April. There will be no curriculum meeting in April. And Mindy Polo will be there to discuss the EL program. Because of legis, legislation at the state level, there are changes that are going to have to take place in the EL program. They have to go through a coordinated program process, and we need to see where we are, where we're in compliance, where we're not. So that will be presented then.
All right. Thank you. Are there other, other subcommittee chairs who wish to make reports?
I think most of my report was made, certainly.
Yep, seeing none. Is there new, other liaisons that updates? Yes, Ms. Scott.
This is just very quick. I was at the BEF meeting the other night, and they're, they're into planning a very good event, which will be at Coolidge Corner School. The teams, the trivia teams will allow to be, are allowed to be bigger, there are more people who can go. However, they only have about 50 tickets left. They're also trying to sell the raffle tickets, and if you're interested in that, just see a member of the BEF board or call the BEF office, and they'll let you know.
So I know of several, four, I think, that I know of, school committee members that will be exercising their trivia chops on that night, and the invitation is open and welcome to anybody else who is free on Friday night, the 30th, yes, to join us at the, the school committee team table. I don't think we've ever won, but we've placed reasonably, we've placed pretty well occasionally.
The idea is not to lose in the first round.
David, can I just do a quick? I would just like to do, for the wellness committee, I would like to just do a shout out to all the people who are working so hard in Brookline, both in the schools and in the mental health, the public mental health department. There are phenomenal events going on, and lectures, and forums. There was one, March 6th, which, of course, we've missed, it was Video Gaming Addiction, Understanding the Warning Signs, and Treating the Problem. I did not make it, I learned about it afterwards, but there were 180 people who registered to attend. So there's a whole bunch coming up for National Public Health Week, April 1st to the 7th, and I just encourage us in the audience just to be aware of what's going on. There is a lot of wonderful programs going on, and.
Send that to Ms. Coines, who can get it out to all of us.
Okay, be happy to.
Yes.
Safed to School through MASTDOT is having, and I know a number of PTOs that think have distributed it, a student design contest for yard signs to reduce idling in front of schools, and submissions are due this weekend. I know I saw it through Lawrence, so I encourage students, grades two through eight, to submit their submissions, their drawings, either hand-drawn or digital submissions that are due by Saturday. And then those four winning designs will be put onto post, to signs and distributed to participating schools, which I believe all of our schools are now registered as Safed to Schools affiliates. Transportation Board met last week, I was not able to attend, but I know Mr. Pollack was able to go, and there was some discussion on the Hammond Road Diet. There's another meeting coming up next Monday as well, and I attended a Brookline Adult and Community Ed Advisory Board meeting, and we'll be meeting again in a month.
So briefly, on the, on the T-Board, there, there was a, they, the Transportation Department has hired an outside consultant to look at, at a whole program of what's called a road diet, or road slimming, for Hammond, all the way from Heath to Corus James Circle. And involves adding a lot of planting, but also adding a raised bicycle track. And in short, and the, the community was, was very receptive. I think a lot of the people were sort of, this is 13 years in the making, but thank you for bringing, you know, getting it this far. And the main comment that was sort of substantive that came up again and again and again from the audience, from members of the board, was that the consultant had put a two-way raised bicycle track on the east side of the street, and everybody said, why don't you look at doing them one on each side, so that, you know, the bicycles are moving in the same direction as the cars, but they would move the granite curb out and raise it up so that it would be not the, separate, separated by plantings from the sidewalk, but at the same level as the sidewalk. So it, and it's, this is a long-term project because it's not in the CIP, except for the piece about the signalization and the road diet just it. Anyway, but it was, it was informative, and it obviously, you know, resonates with the $1.7 million that's in the Baldwin, also in the Baldwin School Project budget for the, the flashing pedestrian crossings and sidewalk improvements and everything to just sort of make sure that there's attention to the overall needs of that neighborhood, particularly in the context of the school project. Yes, well, Ms. Dikoff had her hand up, and then.
Okay, no, no. So I do think it's important that someone, if you're going to a T-Board Monday, just a couple of things. One is that the Driscoll project will be on the agenda, and I think the one piece of feedback that became very clear to me after talking to T-Board was that they really want to think about pedestrians first and bicycles second, and cars third. And their feedback to the school department, which I'll just share with you, and to the architects, and to all of us really, is that when transportation plans get presented to them, that they always focus on traffic and parking, and that's 90% of the conversation is about cars. And so they were more than encouraging that presentations focus on how students will walk to school, how people will roll to school on bicycles and on scooters. So I would just suggest that, and I've given this feedback to Mr. Lummis and to the architect about that presentation, but I think it would just be helpful. Unfortunately, I'm going to be in San Francisco, but, and Mr. Lummis is on. to be in San Francisco, but, and Mr. Lummis is on vacation, I think. So, it'd be really helpful for us to collectively express to the Transportation Board our green inclinations and also our prioritization of pedestrian and rolling children on their way to school, and just making sure that that feels like it's being, it's, that's leading the conversation rather than the traffic and parking thing. So even things like, we are separating children from service vehicles because right now, children are walking across parking lots next to delivery vehicles, and this is a safer way for children to get to school. I think there are lots and lots and lots of those things in there, but I think the narrative has really focused on cars and parking. So that's just one piece. And I think second piece is for, if there's going to be a similar discussion at the MBTA, the location of the MBTA platform, so we only, on the high school project, which is the second schools item that's going to be there, it's going to be a similar conversation, just in, explaining that there are certain regulations that the MBTA, you know, is putting on us in terms of where entrances can be in signage and whatever. That said, that we are doing whatever we can in order to, you know, make it pedestrian-friendly and friendly for children, safe for children. Anyway, all those things are getting discussed, I just think it's important for that message to get communicated to the Transportation Board. So whom, whatever constellation, I'm sort of looking at the three of you, you're not going to be there. Are you going to be there?
I, I have to check my calendar.
So it's, I just, I think it's important that that be clear because I think we were just getting a lot of pushback.
Yeah, no, that's something that I've heard at Transportation Board, from them in wanting the, the focus to be on pedestrian and bicycle transport as, and then talking about cars. And if we focus the conversation around cars, then we, and we build it, they will come. Do we know who's giving the presentations? And have there been any changes to the plans after that conversation with the architects?
So please, one thing that would be helpful is if you can express that multiple times the architects have been asked to make sure that there are bike lanes, bike lanes get raised every single meeting by me, in addition to other people, and, and there are, there are going to be maps that are shown, they have not been shown to the Driscoll Building Committee, but they are sort of proposed, and so...
With bike lanes and things?
With bike lanes and things, and there are options there to be, you know, discussed by Transportation Board. So, apologies, but if somebody could take good notes, I'm happy to continue to push those issues during Building Committee meetings, both BHS and Driscoll. But, anyway, so to some extent.
So you're talking about not this past, but the previous one, which I also attended?
No, no, I'm talking about next Monday.
I know, I know, but, but, but the, the comments from T-Board members were quite pointed, and they were basically said, can you come back and present your information in this other way?
Yes.
And, and we said yes.
Right.
So it's really, the main, I mean, so part of this is that school committee members reinforce it, but the main thing that we want to make sure is that, that Giles Hamm, the transportation planner, is set and that his presentation meets those expectations.
Right. And so the problem is that Mr. Lummis won't be there, I don't know who else, but in addition to Giles, is giving this presentation. So I have given this feedback to Ben, I, we've gone through talking points, we've gone through, but Ben won't be there. So, I guess the point is, like, may I, and he's, I assume he's communicating it to Giles, but I just think that someone, some staff member should be there. And again, it's just flipping the entire narrative to start with how this is a friendly thing for...
No, I think that's a really positive thing, so I will...
Something, I think it's something we've been talking about. I just want to make sure that they fully understand, and maybe you can even just say from the point of view of the school committee, from the point of view of the co-chairs of these building projects, this has been a priority.
It is a priority, okay.
Yeah, it has, and it has been throughout.
And then we're, and we've reiterated those same needs for the high school project to emphasize pedestrian safety. What about, is there going to be some conversation about bicycle racks, bicycle access as well? Is that also?
Yes, bicycle racks and showers. I mean, even to the point where I've asked questions like, if you're going to put bicycle racks on a, on a map, how many bicycles does that hold? And what do we know about how many bicycles might be coming to this building? And if we don't know yet, is that illustrative? If it's 10 and it turns out to be 40 bicycles needed, where are you going to put the other rack? So, we have asked these questions. I anticipate they will ask again, but at any rate, so...
Do you think we'll have answers for that for the meeting on Monday?
I haven't seen it. So, I think the point is that we're all asking the questions.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that Transportation Board understands that we are asking these questions also.
But even if we don't have the answers, that there's flexibility. So if there's 10 people who are riding, or 40, that you have the ability to expand or contract.
Right, and where would those bike racks go?
If we do, yeah, yeah, if we do.
There will be showers in each one, I remember they are there, so that's not an issue.
Anyway, just, I don't know to what extent there will be answers, but I guess my point is, please ensure that they understand we are asking.
And is the same person presenting both pieces?
I, I don't think so. I think they have different people.
They have different people who are...
In fact, I know they do, because, because the JLA architects and what, oh, we, we just missed the entire, the entire conversation we had about prioritizing pedestrians.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah. You won't be there, so that's not very helpful. Anyway, but...
You mentioned on Boyleskin Street that they were thinking about putting the bike paths both directions on Hammond Street, but what they were thinking about originally, or maybe still now, putting the bike path on one side with, with two lanes?
Mm-hmm.
Be very careful when people talk about that because my son, who is a bicyclist, was complaining about the bike lanes that are on Brattle Street in Cambridge because he said he had parked on a side street, and when he pulled out, he checked very carefully, the traffic is moving this way. He checked very carefully to see that no biker was coming. But when traffic is moving one way, people don't think about looking the other way for a bicyclist.
So that was the point, that was, right. So that, that's why many people, was one of the main reasons many people said, you know, coming out of driveways, coming out of side streets, yes, so that the direction was given to investigate separating the bike paths.
That's just something I think we all should...
Okay, well, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a few liaison reports, I'll try to be, I'll try to be quick. So, one of them relates to the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee. They have broken up into three subcommittees, as I mentioned previously, and they've been meeting separately. And the next joint meeting will be this coming Monday, the 18th. They have changed somewhat the goals and responsibilities of each of the subcommittees. So the first one, which will deal with financial forecasting, is co-chaired by Paul Sainer and Meany Calucci, Jeff Rudolph and Nathan Spritz are also members. Their goal is to interpret the assumptions of the 2014 budgeting tool that was utilized by the town administrator, and also to potentially revive it. They want to look at the operating plan, the debt financing plan, the CIP. Their model data sources will be the FY 2020 to 2024 five-year financial plan. They're also going to look at the annual audited financial statements for, for the town. Then the next subcommittee, the Financial Policy and Principles Group, they are, that committee is co-chaired by Carol Levin and Cliff Brown, Arthur Siegel, Mike Toffel, and Nancy Daly are also on that committee. Their setting is their goal to determine the best policy framework that quantifies balance of financial performance, social benefits, and other intangibles. They want to identify municipal finance best practices, look at revenue allocations, cost allocations, expense management, grant applications, capital expenditures, debt capacity, and OPEB funding. And then the third subcommittee is going to build off the work of the first two, and they are going to put together a multi-year financial implementation plan. So I'll know more on Monday about sort of what their early findings and recommendations are. My next liaison report will be about the Land Bank Committee. So we met a couple of weeks ago, and it was mostly spent on Harold Peterson, one of the members presenting his report. What he did was he performed an analysis of what occurred to real estate prices after passage of real estate transfer taxes for Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. And he compared real estate prices in, on those islands to what hap, what occurred in Brookline. He had very low confidence in the results because essentially it showed all three on the same trajectory, and Brookline obviously did not have this real estate transfer tax. So his thoughts, and it was shared by many other members in the committee, that essentially this just really reflected interest rates and general health of the economy. There's, was additional talk about the Community Preservation Act and whether it would be possible to amend it to also allow procurement of land for school purposes. Currently, it does not do that. Also going to be talking to State Rep. Mike Connolly of Cambridge because he's been the primary mover of bills in the state legislature relating to transfer taxes and land banks. There has been a lot of push, particularly in Somerville, to have a real estate transfer tax in place, but specifically for affordable housing. We're also seeing that in Provincetown, Arlington is showing interest in that, and the state legislature apparently is more receptive to this idea as long as it's solely in the ambit of affordable housing. So we're going to try to flesh that out more, and speaking with Mike Connolly about why perhaps for affordable housing it's acceptable, but not for other uses. The, also, there's going to be a discussion with Sean Cronin, who's the former deputy town administrator. He is now with the Department of Revenue, just taking some of his ideas about potential revenue streams for procuring land. Addition to that, there was a net zero committee meeting, which essentially was winding the group down, so they're no longer going to be meeting anymore. They feel that they have met their goals, in part because of the fossil fuel-free warrant articles that passed, and they have submitted a report, and in that report, their suggestion is that while a lot of progress has been made in terms of a commitment to fossil fuel-free consumption and all-electric consumption, that doesn't solve the whole problem. You also have to look at the source of the energy, and you also have to look at how you are storing the energy. In addition to that, while it's a good start to be with, to be focusing on schools and municipal buildings, municipal buildings are only 2% of our buildings in Brookline. Commercial buildings are 20%, residential 48%, and if we're really going to be serious about meeting our greenhouse gas emission reduction commitments, then we're going to have to try to expand this effort into privately owned lands as well. Charlie Simmons presented at the Climate Action Committee, and he was basically talking about different techniques he's been utilizing to increase energy efficiencies, specifically about daylight dimming lights, occupancy sensors, heating recovery units, demand control ventilation. He also talked about SchoolDude, which is a maintenance efficiency operating system, and how it's also very important to educate people into how they're going to actually use energy in our buildings, because even if we have the best of intentions in terms of what gets installed, sometimes the culture of how a building is operated will undo all of that good. If people are plugging in their microwaves, or their portable refrigerators, or bringing their own space heaters, that can be a big problem. That's enough for now.
Just to follow up on what Mr. Pullman was saying, apparently there's going to be a warrant article. I had an email from Jesse Gray, who I do not know, but is a town meeting member, about the town purchasing any new vehicles that would, that all new vehicles that the town would purchase would be electric vehicles. That we, our conversation was around electric buses and that we just don't, they're not there yet, but he did say, apparently in looking at the town fleet of cars, the schools have a number of cars also, and that would be included in this warrant article, and I'm wondering if we see any kind of issues with that.
So I think the warrant was posted today.
Oh, it was.
It might have been yesterday, but it, it was, I got an email, TMMA email that it was posted, so I think we can, anybody can go online and look at it, and we should look at it, and if we want to comment on it, then we'll have a hearing.
We should look and see what the effect is. Yeah, maybe Ms. Dunn could look into the warrant article that requires the town and the schools when replacing. My understanding is it's only when replacing cars that they would be replaced, or vehicles. For the town, it's much more significant, is my understanding. For the schools, I don't think we have that many. We have some, but we don't have very many vehicles, and it may not be an issue.
The only thing I would add is that I think it would be helpful if we wrote some sort of note about how we're talking our, our thoughts about electric buses, or just, just some sort of supplemental note that can go into the combined reports. So I think it'd be important.
Because it's a warrant article, and we impine on warrant articles that have to do with the schools, we may want to do that.
Exactly. All right.
But if we could, Ms. Dunn, if you could find out the financial impact to us?
Any other reports or new business? So, I move that we meet an executive session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, Unit A, Unit B, pair professionals if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and I so declare. And purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and this is Newbury College, 129 Fisher Avenue, Brookline, Massachusetts, and I so declare. So again, we're time constrained, so I urge everybody to find themselves in the small conference room so that we can conclude our business.
Poll the committee.
And, yes, poll the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, and we will not reconvene in open session. So thank you all, if you're still watching.